Okay, folks, let's go to the General Purposes Committee meeting to order. May I have a motion on the minutes? All those in favor, post carried. We have the one delegation, Yannick Simovic, Board Chair for Tourism Richmond, together with Nancy Small, the CEO. So come forward, and we have your Tourism Master Plan later on the agenda, but tell us what's your thoughts.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and senior city staff. My name is Yannick Simovic, and I'm honored to serve as a Chair on the Board of Tourism Richmond, and I'm also the General Manager of the Sheraton Vancouver Airport Hotel. Together, joining me today is Nancy Small, the CEO of Tourism Richmond. Together, we are privileged to stand before you to discuss the vibrant tourism landscape of our beautiful city. We are thrilled to be here today, as we do every year, providing some insight into what Tourism Richmond does, what do they do what they do, and how they do what they do. We are very proud of Richmond Destination Marketing Organization, as it continues to establish itself as one of the top DMOs in the country, which regularly pay recognition and acknowledgement through industry awards and top industry collaboration. Tourism Richmond, its Boards of Directors, and our stakeholders are committed to promoting Richmond's unique cultural heritage, incredible culinary scene, and unparalleled location as a gateway city. We want to acknowledge the continued support and partnership of the City of Richmond, Mayor, councilors, and city staff. We literally could not do this without your support. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today, and Nancy Small will now take you through some updates, and we will welcome any questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Yannick. Appreciate it. Wonderful to see everybody here again, as we usually do in July. Great to be back. These are our corporate pillars as an organization, and you can see here our purpose, vision, values, and mission. This is our guiding light that help us determine what we should do and why we should do it, and helps our team determine how we invest our municipal and regional district tax funds. Very happy to report that 2024 was an excellent year for tourism in Richmond. We had a record year, and that was driven by extremely strong demand for tourism and for Richmond specifically. We're seeing already, in this summer in particular, some very strong and encouraging results. Hotel occupancy averaging around 90 to 95 percent, that's one metric that we follow. That's a really important one, because that really tells us how many people are coming into the market. The beginning of 2025 was also very strong, as was last year, so very comparable to 2024. We're seeing some really encouraging results for the rest of the summer as well. I'm going to provide you with some highlights, some things that we're extremely proud of that we've been working on over the past kind of year or so. We started the Steveson Spot Prawn and Seafood Celebration two years ago, and it has really taken hold, this particular version this last spring. We saw a number of different events, we saw a dine around with restaurants in Richmond, and of course, celebrating the very unique fishery of the spot prawns and the fishers that actually are part of that. So this has been an excellent, probably about a month-long festival that we put off in the destination in May and June. Many of you will be familiar with the Dumpling Trail. This is, and when I say world famous, I'm not exaggerating. It has been written up all over the world in different outlets. It is a very unique self-guided tour, if you are not familiar with it. We relaunched it, we re-engaged with now 16 restaurants in the market to help us market and create that, and build that unique story that only Richmond can tell about our culinary scene. So very excited to relaunch this and a lot more activity that's going to come to fruition in the fall of this year. Many of us were present on a beautiful day in Steveson about six weeks or so ago, where we launched Fisher's Walk. You'll recall Kerry and I were here back in the late fall of 2024, talking about it, and it's pretty amazing when we see something like this actually get launched and actually get built out. So again, I wanted to thank everybody here, and especially the partnership with the City of Richmond, on helping us bring this to the forefront. Lots more to come on this, this is phase one, and we'll be working on phase two as we move into 2026. I also wanted to highlight some work that we do within our travel trade, and these are our travel agents and receptive tour operators. We work with probably about 30 to 40 different partners at the largest trade show in Canada. It was in Winnipeg this past May. And you can see, everybody is a part of Team Richmond. It's not only Tourism Richmond, but we actually created this very cool little promotion where we took our water bottles and took pictures of them in silly places across the trade show floor. Really made an impact, and it's really a shout-out to the partners that we have, who, again, not only Tourism Richmond, but we have tour operators, we have representatives from our hotels, from our destination, from MacArthur Glen, and you can see, it caused quite a stir with the 1,500 people who were actually at Rendezvous Canada in Winnipeg. I brought some friends, you can see, to Saskatoon. So I brought those lion dancers from Richmond to unveil Richmond as the host for the Travel Media Association of Canada, which is going to take place just prior to the World Cup at the end of April next year at the Richmond Conference Center. To say that people were excited is an understatement. It was a secret, the worst-kept secret at the event, but when the lion dancers came in, a lot of people had never seen a lion dancer. This is in Saskatoon, travel media professionals from across the country. It was extremely fun, and everybody is very excited. We're going to have about 250 of these travel media professionals in our destination at the end of April next year. And of course, we wouldn't, we would be remiss without talking about this exciting event that's happening in our region next June and July. Certainly, the World Cup is going to be a phenomenal experience, I think, for all of us who live in the region. And for a place like Richmond, I think we're really going to benefit from what's happening in Vancouver, and I think we're going to see some excellent results as a result of that. And of course, we partnered with the City of Richmond on some really exciting community activations. Really very proud to be a partner in those celebrations as they come to fruition next year. So be remiss again, the elephant in the room is, of course, the trade wars and what that means for travel and tourism. You know, I am a believer that travel is a force for good, and if we benefit from these trade wars, great. What we're seeing so far is certainly the number of Canadians that are traveling to the U.S. has dropped, plummeted. In some of our border states, it's probably more than 20 or 30 percent. What we're seeing here in Richmond is probably fairly straightforward, I would say, probably about the same as where we were in terms of U.S. traffic from last year. So we're not necessarily benefiting in the way that this headline might tell you, but I think in the longer term, I think Canada will benefit, and British Columbia, Metro Vancouver will benefit from it. Hopefully, this is a short-term, i.e. the next few years scenario, where these trade wars will be a thing of the past, but everything is very unpredictable, as you yourselves know. So we'll see where it all plays out. But ultimately, as I said, we're very encouraged by the early summer results here in Richmond and Vancouver, and I think that we are going to benefit from this in the long term. Finally, and this is something that I know is on the agenda, but I just wanted to acknowledge the importance and the excitement that our team has in this incredible project that we have the opportunity to work on, which is the Tourism Master Plan. We are privileged to be able to do this and to be able to be part of this as a partnership with the City of Richmond, and really excited to continue to move this project forward into what we hope will be a plan that we can all get behind as a destination, not only Tourism Richmond, but the entire destination, and really excited to move this forward as we continue down the journey of the master plan. Ultimately, I believe the future's bright in our sector. I think that we have got the right tools in place, we've got an incredible destination, we've got the right partnerships in place, and I would be very happy to take any questions that any of you have for Yannick Aray.
Okay, we've got a huge, long agenda, that's why we're starting at 3:00 today. So we do have some questions, I'm going to ask you to make your questions succinct, and the answers succinct.
Got it.
Counselor Day.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brody. So in the past, as I recall, Richmond had the highest hotel occupancy of any city in British Columbia. Is that still the case, at 90 to 95 percent?
I would say that we probably are not, we can't take the sole title of that, if the stats that I'm looking at are most recent. We hover between 90 and 95 percent around this time of year. Unfortunately or fortunately, Victoria's been giving us a run for our money, so. So I think we're still doing very, very well, believe me, but there's some other destinations that are doing well as well.
And is there a way to, I don't know, get me prepared for FIFA? We're going to get a lot of visitors, are we going to have enough space for them?
This is a good question, I think we will. I think that there is going to be a lot of people, remember, we only have seven games. Seven Super Bowls, apparently, is what it's been compared to, but I think we'll be okay. We in Richmond are ready for whatever onslaught there is. There are a number of hotel rooms that have been allocated to FIFA, there's a number that are still within, up for grabs. So I think we're going to be okay in Richmond.
All right, thank you. Counselor McNulty.
Yeah, just quickly, thank you, an awesome presentation, actually, brilliant. Just two quick questions, I also want to say, by the way, the Kairamaru's coming in May, that's not up there. I remember 135,000 people were on Gary Point a number of years ago. Just two quick questions, and it's actually Yannick probably better answer that. We're getting comments, questions around the table here from developers regarding, "I'd like to build an apartment, but if I can't make it there, I'd like to build a hotel." My question here is, how many more hotels could we stand to expand to, given 90 to 95 percent, which is impressive? And are the people coming here happy not to go downtown to hotels in terms of being a skytrain and being able to travel there? But more importantly is the development of new hotels? Because there are a number on the drawing board, not necessarily at the hall, but out there in the community.
Well, I know there is some bills that are right now in the making, but I do believe that we easily could add, you know, another 10 hotels in Richmond. You know, the demand is certainly there. And then your second question was, sorry.
About taking from downtown.
Oh, from downtown, no, people love it. So people love it, and I'll tell you why. If you look at the occupancy, Richmond has a higher occupancy than actually downtown Vancouver in the first five months of the year. Where we have the advantage is the rate. If you look at what's the average rate downtown, it's far superior, $200, $300 more than Richmond is. So it is a very attractive destination for anyone, you know, that's budget conscientious. And also, it's a beautiful city, so people, when they come here, as they go to Steveson and many other stuff, and also very close to downtown, 20 minutes by the Canada Line, so it's ideal.
Can I just add to that, because I think it's really important. That is part of our job, is actually to convince people to not necessarily stay in downtown, but make Richmond part of the itinerary when they come to Metro Vancouver. That is literally why we exist. So I think it's a really important acknowledgement that all the things that we're doing, Fisher's Walks, Spot Prawn, all of those things are about establishing Richmond as a destination.
Continue what you're doing well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hobbs.
Thank you, and through the Chair, thanks for the presentation. Just quickly, you mentioned Canadians visiting the States is down about 33 percent or so. Americans coming to Canada is stable. Are we seeing any uptick in tourism here, because other Canadians are traveling from other parts of Canada to come here instead of the States?
It's interesting, not yet. It's still fairly flat, not flat, but it's similar to what it was last year. So what happens when Canadians travel in their own country? They go to places like Banff, or Whistler, or more rural destinations. They don't, and they don't spend as much money. So we want to attract the international visitors, continue to attract Americans where it makes sense, and they just won't travel as much to the cities, so it's flat. But airline demand is building some of that, you're seeing more domestic air travel happening, so hopefully, we're going to convince them to come to Richmond.
Yeah.
And I'll add, one more thing, is that the booking window is much shorter. People used to book, you know, two, three months ahead, now it's a week for a week, and a month for a month, which is unseen. We've never seen this, you know, we'll build up, you know, 5,000 rooms in a month for a month, which is hard to plan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks to Tourism Richmond. We look forward to more with the master plan. Richmond Food Hub, the public engagement feedback, Jill Shury, anything to add to your report?
Nothing to add, we're happy to take questions.
Okay, and a further report is coming in the fall, as I understand it.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's moved, and seconded. Counselor Glanders.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you for all of this, and it's been a long time coming. And I was, you know, there at the Economic Advisory Committee, we presented there, and I know that during, when the Let's Talk was open, the U.S. were actively looking, like, who should we contact? Can you help me reach out to people? But I mean, seeing the results, like, only one food grower responded, so I do have concerns with that. I've talked to some people that I know that grow food, and I said, "Did you participate?" And they went to one meeting, and then they didn't have time to go to the other ones, because they farm full-time, you know? And they requested to participate by phone, and I think that didn't happen. So I'm just wondering if there's any opportunities from between now and the fall to try to reach out to some more people and can maybe add to the report. So, I mean, I know that you tried already, and I know it's a tough.
Let's hear the answer.
Yeah.
Through your worship to Counselor Glanders. So the public consultation, as you've noted, is now formally closed, but that being said, we're happy to hear from folks at any time that have feedback on the questions we've asked or the development of the hub. So that will be very helpful as we develop the report coming forward in the fall, as the Mayor mentioned.
Okay, I'll contact you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Day.
Thank you so much. Great report, it's very thorough. And so my question is that in the fall of 2025, that we did a final gap analysis and feasibility report to Richmond staff, community and sector engagement on the draft Food Hub and feasibility. And now we're going to go out and do the same thing again. And the only thing that's changing is the word "report," as opposed to initially, it was "study." Like, are we being redundant to basically do the same process all over again? On page 23, RGP 23. Just feels like it's a repetition of what we've already done.
Through the chair to Counselor Day, so maybe I can just clarify the wording. So where we are in the development of the Richmond Food Hub right now is that phase one, the gap analysis and feasibility study. So what we've done to date is the consultation with the public and with the sector. What you have before you today is the what-we-heard report from that consultation. What we'll bring forward in the fall is a report with options and financial feasibility that can then detail how we move forward. So apologies if the wording is unclear, but what we're doing, what we've done is the consultation, and what we'll do next is present to council a range of options, including sort of financial ranges of pursuing a physical hub, or a programmatic option, a hybrid, based on the consultation and other research that's been undertaken.
So we received a million dollars from the Provincial Ministry of Agriculture to get this started. Did we hire a consultant for this? Was this done internally? How much is left?
Through the chair to Counselor Day, so yes, the million dollars that we received is seed funding for the gap analysis and feasibility study, and then to get started, whatever is the preferred option of council to move ahead. I don't have the exact numbers in terms of what's ahead, but yes, we worked with consultants on part of this to get their expertise as we look at the, especially the next part, which is the options that we'll bring forward. We wanted to make sure those are robust as possible.
Which would include being part of a provincial network, correct?
So the development of the Richmond Food Hub, the hub itself would be part of a provincial network, the B.C. Food Hub Network.
It seems obvious, so we need to do. I mean, 69 percent of small businesses were, "Yeah, let's do this." So I hope that we're going to move ahead quickly and make use of this funding. So thank you for your hard work, this is a very detailed report. Thank you.
Now we go to the Tourism Master Plan, the public engagement. So that's you again. Anything to add to your report?
Nothing to add, your worship, happy to take questions.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, we're going to go to Counselor McNulty first.
Yeah, thanks very much, an awesome report. I think if you look at public engagement, it's well subscribed. When we're talking about almost 500 responses in total areas, so I think this report is moving us in the right direction. And from an economic point of view, not only just the tourism point of view, but the whole sustainability of the city in terms of our circle, I think this is one of the best reports we've ever had. I just would hope that we would focus a little more on agritourism. And yeah, we talk about agriculture all of the time, but I didn't see anybody touring the blueberry patches this afternoon while they're picking. For tourists, they were there for picking. But there are agritourist activities that can be done, and we need to re-encourage those kinds of things, and if people can come up with ideas, I think if people know that we will accept them and provide the good programs and what have you, that we would consider them. And I think it would be a major step in the direction to add to everything else in the report. I thought it was a very good report, your worship. Thank you.
Counselor Day.
Yeah, it seems loud and clear that we need a, there's a big need for multi-use conference center. I think we've been talking about this for 40 years, so it's definitely well-established that we need it. My question is, some of the existing hotels have sort of mini-conference centers. How well are those being used, and does that indicate how large of a space we would need for a city-run conference center?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, so I can't comment on how well those are being used. My colleagues in the tourism sector would probably be better positioned to address that specific in terms of the occupancy. However, what we do hear consistently is the need for a larger space, and you can see in the report itself that there was some interest in, is that a multi-use sort of center? Is that performing arts? Is that sports? Can it be multiple uses? So there's quite a bit of interest in that. My sense from the consultation is that there's interest in sort of a larger space than we have currently existing in Richmond, but that's something that would need to be explored in the future. It's exactly what size and.
I'm a big fan of multi-use, you know, I don't want a building sitting empty 90 percent of the time, so, thank you very much.
Counselor Hobbs.
Thank you, and through the Chair, thanks for the report. It is very comprehensive, as has been mentioned. Two questions. One is our strategy, our report, what we do in Richmond, it's important to have that integrated into a regional approach. I understand that is the case, maybe a comment on that. And the other part is, I think the funding is contingent on that being integrated into our regional report. And the second question would be the net promoter score. If you could just comment on what that is, very briefly, and also how we progressed kind of over the last 10 years, because I think there's been improvement in that regard. Thanks.
Through the chair to Counselor, sorry, to Counselor Hobbs. So in terms of the regional approach, we certainly heard during the consultation from folks who responded and interest in kind of, okay, Richmond's place in the region in terms of alignment with regional strategies. Yes, there is certainly a requirement that we do that in terms of the B.C. approach and our municipal and regional tax obligations there. I think that, so what you have before you is what we heard during the public consultation. What you'll have next time around is a draft plan, so you'll see much more specifically where there's opportunities to grow Richmond as a unique destination and where it sort of has a place in sort of regional alignment as well. In terms of your second question around the net promoter score, so we don't have 10-year historical data on rich, on the net promoter score of Richmond. We do of Tourism Richmond. So those are kind of two net promoter scores that we're aware of in Richmond. What's important to understand there is that that score is different from a regular percentage. So you've got sort of those who would recommend your destination, minus those who wouldn't recommend your destination. That leaves you with a score. Richmond has been, is certainly strong where we are now, in terms of when we look at the data that's in the report. So we're in a, basically between a favorable and sort of excellent position in terms of how these things are considered. There's certainly room to grow, and so we hope that the Tourism Master Plan will lead us in that direction in the future.
Yeah, thanks for that, because it can be a little confusing, and I'll just end with this comment. I think Tourism Richmond and the city too, staff, deserve credit, because that net promoter score has increased quite a bit, from what I understand, over the last 10 years. So congratulations on all that work.
Counselor Glanders.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you. We did receive a delegation, an on-table item about transit, and improved Steveson bus loop and how that could improve how it relates to tourism. And I was just wondering if you had an opinion on transit to Steveson and how that affects tourism and how it could be improved, and then wondering if there's a way to get this to our staff at Tourism, just so they can review it, because maybe we can refer this to public works.
You can give it to them right now.
Yeah, so I'll give this to you.
Sure.
And then, but also just to do a quick opinion on.
Comments?
Through the chair to Counselor Glanders. So in terms of transit and transportation, that's certainly something that we heard during the consultation in terms of how do we make sure that as tourism grows, that there's also an awareness of how increased number of people may get around and visit attractions, visit different parts of Richmond. So that's something that we're aware of in the strategy. We received a copy of the on-table correspondence that you have as well. So we're aware of the opportunities that the individual has brought up. Certainly, as we take forward the Tourism Master Plan, it's meant to be a 10-year, long-term visionary document. From that, then there'll be sort of shorter-term action plans that can address sort of more specific actions in the areas that have been identified as key opportunities and concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wolf.
Thanks, my question is perhaps to you, Chair. The letter we received from Urgent Moss said at the end that he wanted to speak at today's committee meeting, is that?
Yeah, the agenda is so long that we're just not able to accommodate it.
Okay, well, my question was to him, thanks.
All right, thank you, staff. All those in favor, any opposed, that is carried. Consolidated fees on, what's that, parking, Mark? Anything to add to your report?
Your worship, I have nothing further to add, and I'm open to questions.
All right. Counselor Day.
Thank you very much for emailing me back and forth regarding the legislation that requires us to charge now with the new rate 29 percent tax that would go to TransLink on our off-street parking. I had no idea they had their fingers in that pie, and I'm actually quite shocked by that. I'm also dismayed about the 5 percent GST that is taxed on a tax. And according to the email you sent me earlier, Mr. Carrato, there's really nothing we can do about it. Legislation requires this, is that correct?
Through your worship, Counselor Day, that's my understanding. That tax is collected in 21 other municipalities, Electoral Aid District, including SWAS and First Nations as well. So it's across-the-board tax to all regions and municipalities.
So it's across-the-board tax to all regions and municipalities within the South Coast, British Columbia region of transit authority. It's applied across the board.
So if we're going to raise the rates from three fifty an hour to four seventy-five an hour, I'd like to see really clear signage that explains that twenty-nine percent tax to TransLink. I don't think that we, as a city, should have to take the heat for raising the rates so significantly. So is that something that we can do?
Through your worship to councillor Daye, definitely we can look into that.
Okay. And then I have, think outside-the-box idea, so just bear with me. If we didn't charge the parking fee, we wouldn't have to pay the twenty-nine percent to TransLink. So my one, my question is, what if a nonprofit society, you know, something like the Rotary Club or a nonprofit society, you know, the art gallery, if another association was to receive those funds instead of us, would we still have to submit the twenty-nine percent to TransLink?
Through your worship to councillor Daye, a lot of the revenue that comes in from parking meters goes towards staff, towards capital upgrades as well. So there would be a gap to make up that revenue.
Because they're not paying for repaving or staff, they're just taking their cut and running with it?
Through your worship to councillor Daye, that, the overall revenue from parking meters, aside from the thirty percent cut, the remainder of that goes to pay for tax. So in the hypothetical that you gave, we wouldn't have that remainder. So there would be a deficit that'd need to be made up in terms of the additional level or in terms of a capital request as well.
Well, I think I'd like to refer that we write to TransLink and complain about this twenty-nine percent. I think that's obviously obscene. We're paying for the parking lot, we're staffing it, we're maintaining it, we're painting the lines and we still have to give them twenty-nine percent? That seems grossly unfair.
Let me, let me answer that. First of all, you're going from what, twenty-four percent to twenty-nine percent?
Yeah.
And the, the funding for TransLink has been very transparent and probably most importantly, I can tell you that this is for off-street parking. So the amount that is happening in Richmond, I mean, there's only a few lots where this is a factor. I can tell you that the, by far, the lion's share of the off-street parking is in Vancouver and at the airport. And so, and many years ago, we did various things at TransLink to try and mitigate for that phenomenon. So you can write anything you want. I don't think you're getting anywhere on this one.
I think we, it's our, it's our job to work for the taxpayers of Richmond and I think we should write a letter complaining that it shouldn't go from twenty-four percent to twenty-nine percent.
I'm telling you, you're wasting your time, okay?
It's a letter.
Nobody likes, nobody likes more taxes, but that's the way it is. There were probably six months of intense negotiations, of which that was a very, very small part with the province when we came up to the latest investment plan, which has mandated the twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine, yeah, twenty-nine percent tax. Councillor McNulty?
Yeah, just very quickly, your worship. Thanks for the report. I guess my question on the, on the taxes, they are very, very specific and are they, well, at least, I'll give you all my questions, anything answered. Are they enough to encourage movement and people not just parking there all day? You know, if it's reasonable rates, somebody come and park it and take off and go to work. If I can get away with eight dollars for parking and I don't want to be like Vancouver. And I guess the other question I had, are the rates reasonable at the seniors' centre and the tennis club for members, because they are Richmond residents? And the final thing is on the transit tax, we have to go with it and I would encourage it if it encourages bus access and increased bus access to all parts of Richmond, because we're talking everybody and not just this area. And can the money, any monies be dedicated to setting up a transit centre in Stephenson? Like we want to get the buses off the road. They want to buy property or make a deal with the Harbour Authority or whatever, some of this money hopefully can go that route. So there are actually only two questions and a comment, your worship.
Through your worship. There you go.
Through your worship to councillor McNulty, I believe that there is enough movement in our parking spaces and our rates are consistent with other cities. There is room for innovation, however, so staff are looking into the concept that's been applied in different cities about variable rates as we're implementing some of our new software systems and meteor technology. We may see that recommendation to at certain peak times to elevate the rates and off-hours to reduce it. So it's a, it's a progressive system of charging for rates. In terms of the application of those fees, the taxation towards building transit centres, my understanding is that tax that's collected goes towards road capital projects and transit operations. So the example that you gave would be an example of where that money is being applied right now.
Good. Thank you.
Councillor Wolf?
Thank you. My first question is from an experience. I went to Vancouver the other day and went to an off-street parking and I thought I was paying the rate that was advertised on the signs, on the screen, until it asked for you to tap your card and then it was about thirty percent more because of the taxes. So has Vancouver already instituted their increased rate?
Through your worship to councillor Wolf, I believe so. And if you look at Surrey and Vancouver, Burnaby, these are all examples of them applying it.
Okay. So we're aiming for August first. Others have already gone.
Through your worship to councillor Wolf, just a minor amendment to that, our implementation would actually be in September because it requires fourth reading of the bylaw to come into effect.
Okay, thanks. My second question is in regards to the McDonald Road site that's listed. So there's five locations. The one that to me, to me just doesn't quite fit this is McDonald Road, because that's out at McDonald Beach on Sea Island, north of the airport. There is no bus route there. There's no bus route to Iona. Currently, the only way to get there with somewhat like a bus is a shuttle that's operated by Metro Vancouver Regional Parks. So, and that, maybe you can clarify, do they get any of the TransLink tax that's collected? Does any of that go to their pilot project that's running right now for six months?
Through your worship to councillor Wolf, Metro Vancouver is one of the, they're subject to the same taxation as well. So they would be under the same umbrella of improvement projects and capital as applied through that taxation.
Okay, thanks. And then just final follow-up on that. So the base rate only applies to vehicles who are towing a boat-trailer. And again, I kind of feel it unfair. There's, there's no way you can take a bus or benefit in this movement of yourself and vehicle with a bus, because you're towing a boat. This is the only public boat launch in Richmond for all of our residents. The only other two are private ones that are open on their own schedule and charge their own amount. And to, to have somebody go seeing online that it would cost them twenty-five point five to even just use it for an hour, to then get hit with almost another ten dollars on top of that. I don't know if you can comment, is this, is this similar in any other situation or jurisdiction? Because to me, it seems not, it doesn't make sense.
Through your worship to councillor Wolf, we do see a lot of demand for those parking spots. So those rates could probably even be higher and we'd still have turnover. But one of the reasons, as was asked earlier, is that those rates do ensure a certain amount of turnover.
Okay, then I'm just, I'll just highlight what comment that came earlier, is that we may do a better job of advertising it, not right before people tap their card, but to actually put up, even if it's a sticker over top, if it changes. But it may be, we should be saying, even on the website, if you're going McDonald Road to park for however much of the day, it's going to cost you thirty-four point fifty-four. And that needs to go not just at the last minute, but ahead of time.
Through your worship to councillor Wolf, we can definitely make sure that the signage is prominent.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that that's an important point, to make sure people know what they're paying for. Councillor Lu?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Thank you for the report. So just to clarify then, on GP one thirty-five, the thirty-five-hundred McDonald Road is twenty-five fifty for the first day plus all those. So the amended parking rate is thirty-four fifty-four? Is that correct? Not nine dollars, right?
Through your worship to councillor Lu, so we'd be looking at twenty-five for the first day and then the new amended rate would be nine oh four following that.
Additional?
Yes.
The amended rates are the total amount, right?
Through your worship to councillor Lu, I can, I believe that is the.
That's just a typo, right? Just didn't get carried across?
Through your worship, councillor Lu, yes, I believe that is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was correct and then we're not approving the wrong numbers or something. Thank you.
Councillor Go-Anders?
Yeah, thank, thank you through the chair and yeah, thank you councillor Lu for pointing that out, because it's a big difference between nine dollars and thirty-four dollars. You know, of course, nobody likes more tax, but TransLink has to get revenue, they have to expand bus service and it makes sense to me to put it on parking on the street, especially where there's bus service and near transit, because if they, they don't, I mean, this is all part, I don't know the intricate workings of TransLink, but you do. And if they don't get it from here, they're going to increase fares for, for everybody, which, which is counter to what we want. And they're doing that anyway, but this is all part of the picture. But regarding what councillor Wolf said about this, this McDonald, it doesn't make any sense to me to have the TransLink tax on that if you can't do it by bus. So is there a way we could amend this motion to exclude that one?
Through your worship to councillor Galander, I believe that the tax that's collected goes towards Metro Vancouver as well as any one of the twenty-one municipalities as well. And it was alluded to earlier that there is a shuttle that is in place out to that parking lot as well. So it is applied across the region in terms of taxation. And we found that within McDonald Beach, there is a need for turnover. So that would be the benefit of those that do require some form of transit out to that area, they would benefit from that taxation.
Right, just follow-up. So just to clarify for me if you can. So the parking at McDonald Beach, this fee is only for vehicle towing watercraft trailer. So if they, they launch their boat and then have to park the trailer there, that's what they're paying for? But the rest of the parking lot is, is not paid parking for just use the beach, right?
Through your worship to councillor Daye, this is the rate for that towed craft. I can get back to you regarding the rate would be for non-towed craft.
Well, according to your schedule, it talks about McDonald Beach watercraft trailer parking. So it does seem to imply that it's only for that, as councillor Galander says. Maybe you could just clarify that between, from here to next week.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I don't see how the shuttle would help somebody that's got their boat-trailer.
Councillor Heatt?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The way this stands right now, I'm not going to be supporting it, but I just need clarification on a few things. You talk about the fact that fifteen thousand annually will come into the city general revenue. Is that correct?
Through your worship to councillor Heatt, year-to-date, we've collected around twenty-seven thousand dollars as of July. Sorry, and remitted that back to TransLink. That will be the flow-through for this month. And then collectively, in 2024, it was fifty-one thousand that was remitted back to TransLink. Twenty-twenty-three is forty-two thousand and 2022 is thirty-one thousand.
So if we go with what TransLink is asking for, and the mayor, I just need to clarify, were you speaking on behalf of the mayor or a TransLink rep in defending a tax increase by TransLink?
I'm speaking as the mayor.
Thank you. Just need that clarification. So in essence, anything we capitalize because of the work you're doing in this particular area and the fact that we're able to bring this more in line would benefit TransLink?
Through your worship to councillor Heatt, currently that cost is being borne by the city. And if this additional cost were added on, then that would be additional cost that could pay for increased enforcement and capital upgrades.
But regardless, it's going to TransLink. It's not coming to Richmond.
Through your worship to councillor Heatt, that is correct.
I won't be supporting this.
All right, may I have a motion? Moved. We'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried with one, two, three, four, opposed. Minero Park Vision Plan Update, Jason Chan. What do you want to add to your report?
Nothing yet. Stop is happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Councillor McNulty, we'll start there.
Thank you very much, your worship. I appreciate the report. It brings back, if you remember, I guess you couldn't take pictures of the sod grass, the open field and the trees and the cinder track with the portable bleachers on it. It's come a long ways in, in the last sixty years. That was just a jest. I don't know, I didn't think you got it, but that's okay. But that's what Minero Track was years ago. And there was a very interesting, I, I hope, a couple of things, that, that the idea, and it's not written, that we keep Minero is, it's a signature park and always has been, and a balance between athletics and passive park. I think it's extremely important that it's dedicated. Not everybody's going there to run a marathon or run around the track, but some people are going there just to sit, to be in the park, et cetera. And I think we need to, maybe I missed it, but the integration with the hospital and the rehabilitation that the park has been using over the years on it and the multi-use of it and the diversity. It's a catch-all park. I think it's probably one of the most unique parks in the whole region of Metro Vancouver. And I hope that we will keep it that way. To me, it's important that we, we keep it, no matter what people say. Just quickly, it was interesting, the Richmond Cricket Club, we're going to move them to South Arm and Thompson. I hope they're not going to take the pickleball pitches or Thomas Kidd. I hope we keep the pickleball there. Is that where we're going to move them?
Through the chair to councillor McNulty, no decisions have been made yet about potentially relocating the pitch at Minero Park to another park site. We have communicated with the Richmond Cricket Club and learned that there's been recent significant interest in the sport. So we're going to further analyze that through sport courts and field strategy and then the outcomes of that would be coordinated with the renewed Minero Park Vision Plan process.
So they could be part, you said renewed interest. At one time, Richmond had four cricket teams and some pretty good championship teams. And so their, the numbers are down in terms of the cricket club? Is that what I'm hearing?
Through the chair to councillor McNulty, with our communications with the Richmond Cricket Club, they communicated to us that there's actually been significant growth recently.
Oh, good.
In the sport. And there's strong demand for youth league, which can't be accommodated currently with the single cricket pitch at Minero Park.
Well, it's a good, good report and it's come a long ways. I just hope we, your worship, we, we keep that balance, that it becomes a community passive park and at the same time, it continues to provide for athletics in the downtown core. Well, it's too bad we lost the old pavilion. Thank you.
Councillor Go-Anders?
Thank you, your worship, through you to staff. Thank you for this and just want to address the, I agree with the comments from councillor McNulty about it being a wonderful park and, and very special and everything else. I appreciate everything that you highlighted in here. When we go to GP one forty-five about parking use and management, so I know this isn't possibly in your department, like it's in more in the transportation or, but I'm not sure. But I just want to clarify, so we did do this referral just recently about the parking in the area and I know that we've already made a few changes with regards to adding some seniors-only parking and stuff. I just want to know, do you have, do you know when the referral is going to come back about the parking and is, is it looking at possible new large capital infrastructure projects? Because it kind of relates to the whole area.
Through the chair to councillor Galander, while we don't have the timing on when this refer is coming back, we don't think it's, it's related to proposing any new infrastructure. I think more of that is in terms of how to program restricted hours, et cetera, but we'll, we'll defer to the staff team that actually look after it when it comes back.
Okay, yeah, so then maybe an additional refer will be required soon on that, because I, I mean, just the more.
Because I, I mean, just the more people I talk to, we're looking at facilities like what they have in Port, in Portquillam, for example. It's just, it's a massive, um, it's got the pool, it's got the library, it's got the rinks, the arenas, the ice, the lacrosse with all underground parking. And it's this amazing facility and we've got our awesome MCal, but with not enough parking. And then we've got this and we've got this and that and the rink there and empty space here. And to just, and then if we're going to do a covered lacrosse box, parking is an issue everywhere. And we, we're going to need to look at a parcade. Councillor Day had a great idea about doing the tennis bubble on top of the parcade. These are big sort of outside-the-box ideas, but I, I think we need to look at it sooner rather than later to make sure the whole place is accessible and, um, and able to be visited by everybody easily. The parking is such a frustration. Um, thanks for the report. And, um, and, and just regarding the South Arm thing and about cricket, I know that we did get rid of, um, that old lacrosse box that was the wrong size and, and we're adding six or four pickleball courts there. That's not going to change, uh, four. And, but if there is room for more expansion at South Arm for facilities and we're looking at expanding cricket, I just want to put it out there that, um, we could use another hockey box, lacrosse box in South Arm area because it is missed. And so if there is room to, to build something else there, I just want to put it out there that we should look at something more to the east because everything for hockey boxes and lacrosse is on the west side. And I've been hearing that from the community a lot to increase enrollment from other areas of the city, so.
I think the idea is that there's going to be eight more pickleball courts.
Yeah.
That was the whole idea.
Right.
Councillor Day.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brody. So great report. I'm really happy that on page one forty-five, you talk about cycling connectivity. I think that's really smart. On page one fifty-three, you refer that the designated bike paths and pedestrian only. Absolutely. We cannot have cycling and pedestrians together. We know that's just going to be a recipe for disaster. We, we learned that big time over at the Bark Park. Relocating the cricket field to South Arm or Thompson or Tom, Thomas Kid would be excellent idea, especially if it's multipurpose because, you know, fields can often be used for something else in the off-season. So I'm happy about that. What I'm a little frustrated about is, um, as we go to a public process, there's going to be a lot of discussion. For instance, the, uh, night, two thousand nineteen Minero Park Vision Map on page one fifty, I can't even read it, one sixty, one fifty-five, four. It says that, it has a picture of the two fields with all the tennis courts. I think there's six, eleven of them. And then at the very bottom, it says in the long term, fifteen to twenty-four years, a proposed parcade approximately two and a half stories for two hundred and fifty stalls to be included as required. This final location footprint and height and capacity to be determined at the time of implementation. We cannot get a parcade fast enough. You know, we've got this amazing facility at MCal with senior center swimming pool. People drive in, they can't get a parking spot and they drive out. Seniors are not going to take a bus and a lot of people that are going there with little kids are not going to take a bus. We need a parcade. So as councillor, um, Go-Anders pointed out, it occurred to me that where those tennis courts are, the six tennis courts closest to the MCal center, why couldn't we have a parcade there and then potentially move those tennis courts to the top level? Just, I don't think, thinking outside the box, but that's what I do. And then when I look at the new map, um, the renewed Minero Park Vision Map on page one fifty-eight, the plan shows that the Minero three latticeworks fields would take over six tennis courts. I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of opposition to that. Have I got that wrong?
Through the chair to councillor Day, apologies, um, the, the public tennis courts are not labeled directly on the plan and that color, that general color just denotes active sport amenities. So apologies if that's not clear. It's, no changes are proposed to the tennis courts.
That's good because I could just see the, the writing in the street over that one. So, um, good. So that was, maybe fix that map before it comes back to council next week because, yeah. Now, I'm really happy about the engagement process, but it needs to include a parcade located as close as possible to the senior center and the pool. I think that this has to be a, a top-ticket item because again, what's the point of having this beautiful facility that, you know, no one can use because they can't find a parking spot? And, um, yeah, so I'm looking forward to seeing this go forward. I think there's going to be a lot of, uh, opinions and I don't think having the cricket field at Minero is practical. It's just not enough room. I went there today and walked around and now we need the space for what's already there. So good idea. Thank you.
Councillor Hobbs.
Thanks and through the chair, thank you for the report. It is comprehensive for sure. And I just, uh, want to acknowledge all the great work that's been done there so far with the lakes. It's gorgeous. Now, uh, I think balance was mentioned by councillor McNulty and I think that is the key going forward. Just a couple of quick comments, uh, and there's no question involved in this. But when it talks about the widening of pathways and, um, perhaps a more established network for bikes and pedestrians, I'll just say the concern I have is I don't think it should be a connected MUP route for commuters or anything like that. Uh, I think would be not appropriate for the park. You can cycle through there now. You can peacefully coexist, but the paths are pretty narrow. So some widening might be in order, but, um, not in terms of having, uh, like we built on Stevenson Highway or anything like that. And I don't think that's the plan. And the only other comment I want to make is about cricket. I don't understand cricket, but I do like watching cricket. And I don't know for how many decades I've gone through Minero Park, centrally located with kids and everything. We've spent some time watching cricket and it's, I just think pretty cool. So I am a little concerned with shuffling it out of there. I mean, it's a big open space. It's not like a football field. That is a multi-use space. You set it up, you take it down, you're gone and the space can be used for other things. So I'll just give a little plug for cricket. I think it's very fascinating and interesting to have things in the city center. So I know we could move it to different places, but if we do that, I really hope the cricketers, I think they're called, or the crickets, I hope that they're all on side on that and want to do that because I think it's a fascinating central spot for it. And I, I think a lot of people get a kick out of watching it.
All right, may I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Uh, Moray Bridge Replacement Planning Study Update, Sonali and Greali. Okay, go ahead. So I think you're going to give us a, a brief snapshot of the bottom line of what is proposed?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I am pleased to provide a presentation that gives an overview of the staff report, uh, that provides additional information requested by the General Purposes Committee, uh, at the June sixteenth, uh, committee meeting, um, asking for more information on the three options that the ministry, who's currently undertaking the Moray Bridge Replacement Planning Study, has developed for bridge replacement options. And then also three road network options that they are looking at more broadly in the longer term. Just as a refresher, uh, as part of the planning study, the ministry has developed high-level concepts and is seeking feedback as any of the changes that they make within their jurisdiction that's shown in red on the map before you will have an impact to the city. And the three options, uh, especially for the road network, are independent of the bridge replacement. So the bridge replacement can occur without any of the three, uh, ideas that the ministry has developed to change Bridgeport Road or Sea Island Way. For the bridge replacement, uh, I'll walk through the three alignments that the ministry has identified for the Moray Bridge, uh, replacement, uh, project. Uh, the bridge option one presents a new bridge just south of the existing structure. Uh, what this option does is it shifts traffic closer to the existing buildings and development that exist, um, on the Richmond side of the new structure. Bridge option two, as you can see in the purple color, is positioned just north of the existing Moray Bridge. And this alignment in staff's review, uh, requires minimal adjustment in terms of connection back to Sea Island Way. The greater change is proposed with option three. This involves a realigned structure closer to the existing airport connector bridge, so further north away from the existing alignment. Uh, that will mean that there will be a longer distance and more impact on the Richmond side to tie traffic back in to the existing city road network. So based on staff's review of these three options proposed by the Ministry of Transportation for the bridge replacement, option two appears to have, um, the minimum impacts on property and the city's existing road network. I'll next walk through, uh, the three road network options. But before I do that, I wanted to provide committee an update since the last, uh, June sixteenth presentation that staff gave, the ministry has confirmed that it is no longer, uh, considering closure of the Highway ninety-nine exit ramp to number four road. So none of the road network options contemplate that, uh, exit being closed as part of their, uh, proposed changes. So with respect to the road network changes, the first option before you, road option A proposes modifying the existing network through, uh, restrictions, turn restrictions to and from Bridgeport Road. Those are represented by the red dots that you see on Bridgeport Road. And what that does is will help to prioritize westbound traffic from Highway ninety-nine that is traveling to the airport. So that will have an impact to how traffic in Richmond, uh, gets around. This map, uh, before you provides an example of how option A would require local traffic to reroute onto other city roads and increase travel time for local trips. Uh, the black arrow, uh, represents the proposed turn restrictions that the ministry has proposed as part of this option. And then the dash lines, uh, illustrate the detour routes as a result. So if you can imagine to the left of your screen, driving north on number three road, um, making that left turn onto Bridgeport Road that we can do now to directly access the airport or Vancouver would not be permitted. And traffic would have to continue north, um, through the blue dash lines that you see before you and recirculate back via Beckwith Road or River Road, uh, to turn back onto Bridgeport Road. I'll move on to road option B. Uh, road option B proposes a one-way couplet that would convert Bridgeport Road to westbound traffic only and Sea Island Way to eastbound traffic only. So that, uh, one-way system occurs today between number three road and the bridge. This proposal extends that one-way system further east. Uh, and option B, uh, also includes flyovers at Garden City Road and Bridgeport Road. And what those flyovers are are grade-separated highway-style ramps. Um, and that this design essentially with the one-way system and the major infrastructure, uh, at city center intersections would essentially split the downtown with two high-speed, uh, regional roads, reduce local connectivity and does not align with the city center area plans goals for developing complete streets that are multimodal. Staff's review of this option, um, indicates that the city's road network does not provide the redundancy required to support. Road option B, uh, the dash lines on this map illustrate how the proposed one-way system will reroute and increase traffic on city streets. And also, uh, this option would necessitate upgrades of city roads as well. An example of some of the impacts of this, um, road network option is, uh, with Bridgeport Road, uh, being westbound only, traffic that was destined for Costco, for example, would no longer be able to turn right onto Bridgeport Road from number three road and would have to use the other roads, as you can see, to the north of Bridgeport Road to navigate and, uh, reach their destination. So, uh, a bit of a detour as part of this option as well for local traffic in Richmond. The last option that the ministry proposed for, um, the road changes as part of the planning study creates Sea Island Way as a regional corridor. Uh, what that means is it prioritizes two-way traffic on Sea Island Way and proposes a highway-style, grade-separated major interchange at the Garden City Road and Sea Island Way intersection. So all traffic movements would be concentrated at that interchange and there would be turn restrictions added on Sea Island Way. The next map helps to illustrate the impacts of road option C. As you can see by the dash lines on this map, uh, it does create circuitous routes, uh, for Richmond traffic. For example, if a motorist was coming from Vancouver destined to the Bridgeport North area, such as the Night Market, uh, they would no longer be able to turn left on number three road and directly connect to their destination. They would have to travel further east on Sea Island Way, all the way to Garden City Road at the new interchange and then backtrack, uh, to the north Bridgeport area. So in summary, uh, all three road network options proposed reduce connectivity, as you can see, within the city's road network and do not align with the city's transportation, urban design or livability goals in our downtown core. Uh, the ministry has advised that their options do represent a point in time and they will work to refine these options going forward as part of their planning study and in consideration of city feedback. So to that end, um, staff have developed an alternative option to mitigate the impacts that I've described with the road options A, B, and C proposed by the ministry. The option before you, uh, proposes prioritizing, uh, regional traffic on Sea Island Way and making, um, Bridgeport Road designed for local, uh, traffic flows. Right now, there's two regional corridors that bisect our, um, city center and this would have, um, it reduced to one roadway. And grade-separated ramps, um, to address backups and, uh, bottlenecks are proposed as part of this option, but they are proposed as additional ramp connections to Highway ninety-nine and not in our city center. So staff's review of this option, uh, and its elements, we do believe that it helps to balance the local and regional mobility objectives. In terms of next steps, uh, the staff report recommends the city provide a letter to the Ministry of Transportation outlining the comments on the bridge and road network options as described in the report. And in particular, that any options that the ministry develops or refines are in alignment with city interests and objectives and that, uh, it supports the livability of our downtown core and that the road options are independent of the city's road network and don't require any changes, uh, to the city road network as a result. With that said, uh, the ministry will review and consider city comments and they anticipate completing their planning study in November of this year. And that concludes the presentation and staff are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, lots of questions. Councillor McNulty.
I'll be, I'll be brief. Uh, first of all, um, thank you for the report. I greatly appreciate it. I think one of the things we've got, uh, in your comments, the minister will say, don't paralyze us and lock us down because we've got to get in and out of Richmond and we are a hub here. We go in every direction. We go to the airport, we go downtown, we go to the States, we go everywhere. Everybody comes to us and goes out of us. So I think that's key. Do we have the volume, um, uh, traffic volume counts along here of what we're talking about in terms of making any changes whatsoever? Do we know or, or does the ministry even have them? Have they done a volume count?
Through the chair, that technical assessment would be part of future phases. At this point in time, the ministry is just exploring high-level, uh, concepts and ideas. Uh, they have some traffic volumes, but the rigorous, uh, traffic assessment is yet to come and would be part of future stages of this planning study.
Okay, I, I, I really think, sir, your worship, uh, we've got to make sure, this is critical because if a mistake is made and you know how the ministry reacts, we've got to look at Richmond and what we're doing. at Richmond and what we're doing. And I think staff's comments are good and I like the comments when you say you don't support the closure of this and this and this. So I think it's good, but I think it's got to be prudent, whoever's negotiating with them, that they know our point of view here because we could regret it down the road big time. Okay? Thank you.
Counselor Heath?
Yes, thank you. Are we going to divide this up and talk about where we're going to put the bridge or where we recommend the bridge goes and then talk about the traffic network, almost like your two presentations?
Through your worship to Counselor.
Sorry, the comments are on both and there you find them on page 172, 173.
So they just want comments. We're not going to vote on what we think it should be done.
Well, staff has its own suggestions and that's, I think, referred to there, isn't it?
Yes, your worship, through Counselor Heath, we are providing a comprehensive list of comments with respect to both the bridge alignment options and the road network options.
So who's making the decision at the end of the day? Council or the ministry?
Through the chair, it's a ministry planning study, an exercise. We have found through collaboration with the ministry, they have taken council's feedback with respect to the number four road exits. So staff have prepared comments with respect to city interests regarding the bridge alignment and the road network and we're passing it on.
I understand that and you know, my comments are option two for the bridge and the location of the bridge, absolutely. The road structure, I'm really unclear as to what is going on. You know, we know where the congestion is on Sea Island Way right now. It's not as bad on Bridgeport Road when they're going westbound. So if we're looking at interchanges around Garden City, this I'm assuming would include how they access Highway 99 from that interchange versus coming back onto Sea Island Way. So if we can understand that a little clearer on what we can do about that congestion on Sea Island Way going eastbound to 99, that would clear up. I like what you've done, you know, and again, the bridge option is, I agree with, but I don't think we're clear on the road network right now and I think we've got to be very cognizant of the fact that if we're making people go down three road, going past Bridgeport Road, we put it onto that little roadway by the casino and then coming back. We know the congestion around Costco. We absolutely know that. We know all of those. So I think it's very important that we really delve into the road network part of it and I think the easy decision is the location of the new Maori Bridge.
All right, Counselor Glanders.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for this. Good comments from everybody. Yeah, I agree with the road confusion. When I looked at the options on this report, I really appreciated the zoomed in showing exactly what the flow would do for each of those options and they're all really difficult and I appreciate that you come up with an alternative. When we see the alternative, so the figure eight, GP 171, I don't, there's not the same level of detail as what it's going to do to the roads, the way you showed with the ministry's options, A, B, and C, right? So we didn't get the zoom and just showing or reassuring that our alternative is going to do this, this, or that. Like in particular, I'm just thinking about if you're going north on the 99, how would it change that exit to Bridgeport when you take that ramp to the right and then if you went straight through, you'd be at the Michaels and the Pet Value and all that. And then also, the other one, does it affect if Sea Island Way is more of like the highway? If we're going north on Garden City, can we still go through that and then go to Costco? Stuff like that. So I just, I think maybe we could do like a workshop, obviously not now, maybe sometime in the fall, if there's time, that we could have like a council workshop just showing the existing, you know, where the congestion is and our proposed options and just show it so we're all really confident in what we're proposing as an alternative. Just an idea. And then I was thinking about, you know, we had been talking about what we would do for a rapid bus and this is going to put all of that on hold if we were looking at, you know, because there was that rapid bus to Metro Town and we were saying, you know, perhaps a rapid bus on Bridgeport is a better way to go than all through the city the way it was. So some of the options that the MOTT is proposing would completely eliminate that if Bridgeport's only going this way. So I think we should consider that in future plans, where we do a rapid bus. And on GP 170, if you could just do me a favor and explain to me, I've read this like three times, but I can't seem to understand what is being said here in like the second to last sentence. So it's about the closure of the four road off-ramp, right? So MOTT has advised the closure of the number four road exit from Highway 99 is no longer being contemplated. However, staff recommend the city does not support the closure preference of retaining the number four road exit to preserve network efficiency. I don't understand what we're saying there.
Through your worship to Counselor Glander, staff's advice was to, on formal record, send the ministry as part of the list of comments back from the city direction that the city does not support closure of that exit.
That's, I was just reiterating that?
It's to put it in writing.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Lou.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I had the same concern over the wording there. I was like, it sounds like you're saying two different things in that sentence. It says closure and then retaining and we don't support the retention, so it was like, which one is it? So maybe you want to look at it again. When we look at this whole thing, you know, I think we're realizing that of course YVR is going to increase to something like 36 million passengers in the next 10 years. That's what this is being built for. It's to move people, to get them east through the city and to Surrey, Delta, New West, wherever, other places, right? So part of this is moving people along. It's a challenge because there are a whole bunch of other things, not just Costco and we say in the Night Market, but we mean what's actually coming to that area, right? The businesses, center, offices, hotels, commercial. We're also trying to get people and goods there. There are going to be people coming from Vancouver and they're not all coming on Skytrain, so they've got to be able to get in there. There's like thousands of people that are going to be showing up at nine o'clock in the morning to try and get to work and like it's gonna, if it gets built out, we need to be able to get people to work there. So that's going to be a huge, and I don't know if the ministry really understands that that's like how many people are, how many parking stalls are going to be there, how many people are trying to get in and out of there every day, twice a day? So I think that's a big conversation that needs to be reiterated as well of what that build-out is looking like. I'm wondering about the flyovers. It seems to me in a couple of those spaces, flyovers are actually not that big a deal. So like north-south, there is that sort of walkway, multi-use path on Garden City, so there still is the multi-user interface. Nobody in their right mind rides their bike along Bridgeport. They're going north of that or somewhere else, so to not have a flyover because we're trying, like, nobody's walking there, nobody's doing anything there because it is so busy. But getting, moving large amounts of traffic might be in our best interest there rather than having everything grind up. So we are trying to actually move people and goods and get them in and out to the airport and off they go.
All right, Counselor Day.
Thank you very much. It seems kind of funny, this motion, because we're asking you to endorse your comments, but you've already been talking to the Ministry of Transportation, already managed to get them to understand that closing the number four road exit on Highway 99 is a no-go item, so good for you. You're doing a great job. I'd like to see Bridgeport pretty much stay as it is, but I'm wondering, would it be possible to widen Sea Island Way and allow for two lanes onto Highway 99 southbound? Because that's where the backup is every single day.
Through your worship to Counselor Day, yes, exactly. We have found that that is the key bottleneck, is that spillback of traffic trying to get onto Highway 99 southbound from Sea Island. And staff's proposal, if it wasn't clear in the image on GP 171, is to add capacity to that ramp to alleviate the congestion as opposed to restricting turning movement on Sea Island Way and impacting Richmond traffic crossing from the south to the north side of city center. So that is one of the elements that staff is recommending that the ministry review and staff's alternate suggestion does not propose any turn restrictions elsewhere on the network because we want to maintain access to Duck Island, the Night Market, the Bridgeport North area because we know how critical that is to getting people in and out of that part of the city center.
You know, my vision is if there was two lanes going on to Highway 99 and there's a divider going, you are now committed, you're not going north, you are going south and stop this jerrying back and forth, you know, people are jockeying from left lane to right lane and if they have to make a commitment, say before they even get to Garden City, that you are going south on Highway 99, that's going to make traffic move a lot quicker, especially if there's two lanes. And I think that's critical, but to do all these no-left turn, no-right turn is crazy. I mean, you know, we have to maintain access to that part of Richmond. So I would be pretty good with Bridgeport staying as it is, which that bridge is westbound to the airport and the new Sea Island Bridge, and I agree with number two, having it just north of where it is now, should be eastbound in my mind. And then let's just keep traffic moving out and moving into the airport and just keep it simple. And, well, I have one other question is that at Bridgeport, at the Highway 99 exit, which is right by the Dollar Store and Michaels and the Tim Hortons, is there any way to eliminate that light and maybe put in a roundabout?
Through the chair to Counselor Day, we can certainly ask the ministry to entertain that. Staff, we're also recommending that the ministry look at freeing up that intersection as well to alleviate the bottlenecks that occur there as well. So that is, in essence, part of staff's recommended alternative option as well, not the roundabout per se, but addressing that movement.
Yeah, that's quite a bottleneck and that backs up right onto the highways, so, well, good luck, have fun. Thanks.
Thanks, and through the chair, thank you for the report and the work done on it. I agree with the notes and I'll be supporting the endorsement of that when it comes to it. I do agree with the option two for the bridge and I am happy to see the four-road exit one dealt with as well. Overall, for me, the emphasis for Richmond is allowing north-south transit for people that live in Richmond. I think as Counselor Day just mentioned, I find Bridgeport and Sea Island work relatively well. There can be improvements and for one way, I can see that as it is on the west side of number three road for both of them, one way in different directions, but beyond that, I don't want to see that. In terms of ramps and flyovers and things like that, this decision in a smaller way reminds me of what Vancouver decided back in about 73 with Art Phillips and them, when they decided not to have a freeway going through Vancouver. This isn't as big as that. But those flyovers and ramps, I think, would be huge in the context of the neighborhood that they're in and I don't think they'd be all that great to have. So I agree that there are road options A, B, C. I don't agree with them, so I agree with the notes in that respect. And I think the option that you presented for a road network is a good beginning for us to negotiate. So thank you for that and I'll be endorsing it or voting too.
Seems to me that highway concept through Chinatown, that's what led to the Georgia Viad Act.
Yeah.
And they're still trying to get rid of that.
Yeah, that was the only part of it that happened.
All right, Counselor Al.
Yes, a brief clarification. So when we propose these alternatives, it's a formal situation to them, saying that, no, we don't want the other options and this is something that they want them to consider. So it's to place what they have proposed instead of, okay, one more for you to consider.
Absolutely. Through your worship to Counselor Al, staff are recommending that the city does not support any of the road network options proposed by the ministry and that they review the elements as proposed in staff's alternative option and come back to us with an update.
All right, may I have a motion? Moved and seconded for the discussion. Who was in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Now we have the referral response on the low-end market rental parking. Gentlemen. So we're talking about exceedances, procedures, and parking charges for low-end market rental. Go ahead. Do you want to add to your report?
Nothing to add, your worship.
So that's moved and seconded. We do have comments, so Counselor Wolf.
Thank you. Just a quick one. I appreciate that municipal scan there and the municipalities that prohibit the charging parking rates. And then you also mentioned societies that reached, you reached out to and all of them had said, support this. I'm curious, is there any opposition to this at all, having charges?
Through your worship to Counselor Wolf, no.
And you've, and the follow-up then is you've communicated with like accessibility groups, people with the need for wheelchair access that will require vehicles, so they still, those groups that you've reached out to still support charging?
Through your worship to Counselor Wolf, no, we haven't reached out to those groups. Specifically, one thing I would point out though is that the policy that we're putting in front of council would not allow the Lemur unit owner to charge for the use of an accessible parking stall.
Okay. I just know there'll be a lot of turnover and there's a lot of aging, folks who will potentially get that later on after they've started living the unit and been paying into it potentially, so, okay, thanks.
Well, in that respect, as I understand it, for a Lemur unit, if you've got an existing unit, it's only on the turnover of that unit you can start charging for parking.
That's correct, your worship. It'd be two things. One would be you would have to amend your existing housing agreement to allow for any charge and then with any new housing agreement, it would be on new tenancy.
All right, Counselor Day.
Yeah, I was concerned about charging these fees because it is for families, senior students in person with disabilities, but it sounds like, I talked to the nonprofits and they are okay with $100 to $150 fee per car and it does only apply to new buildings. And as you said, if an older building wants to apply the fees, they've got to change their whole agreement. So I agree with all that. I'm a little concerned about the asset limits. It seems like we might be getting the wrong people in these buildings, but, okay. I was particularly concerned on page 176 when it was stated that the Lion's Manor Tower G allows for their apparently low-income, need-of-affordable-housing renters to have up to $350,000 in assets. That was quite a surprise to me. Could you speak to that at all?
Through the chair to Counselor Day, we did follow up with the manager at Kiwanis, who is doing the teneting for that building. With Kiwanis Towers and that building, they do have an asset limit of $350,000. Our understanding from that is that we have seniors there who do not have much income but are holding on to a certain amount of assets to basically support their living. So these are seniors that don't have an income and that rely on that pot of money essentially to fund their retirement.
Well, I still think that's excessive and it explains why there's so many BMWs in the parking lot. And then I understand with regular Lemur units, you're allowed to have up to $100,000 in assets.
Through the chair to Counselor Day, that's correct. There are some things that we will count and some that we won't, so some things will be excluded, like RRSPs. That $100,000 is in alignment with the BC Housing asset test limit and also with the asset test limit for Metro Van Housing, so it's in alignment with both of those organizations.
So we build all this affordable housing and BC Housing is okay with people having $100,000 in the bank?
Through the chair to Counselor Day, that is per household, so you may have a household where there, you know, there's a family and that would be for the entire family. So they've been using this asset limit for quite some time and it is working for them, so.
Counselor Heath?
Thank you, and just to follow up on Counselor Day, and my questions are regarding the asset testing of these particular things. And as pointed out, $100,000 for Lemur units and on 179, you've got assets where you talk about what would be included in that test. And then further on the following page, you talk about through statute or declaration, do we do any independent asset testing? You know, I've talked about this for a couple of years now, on ensuring that we have people that actually qualify to be in Lemur units actually in Lemur units. And are we just going with stat decks or are we going to do some type of asset testing? And are we just going with stat decks, or are we going to do some type of asset testing?
Through the Chair to Counselor Heed, we could become more involved in that aspect with the stat deck, so we could be asking for records, bank account statements, all of those sort of statements as part of the stat deck, that is a possibility.
So it would be us doing it versus the proprietor doing it?
Through the Chair to Counselor Heed, we would rely on the owner-operator to gather that information, declare it to us, and then we could then go a step further, and further verify that information by asking to receive the documents.
I just feel that we have to do something around asset testing to ensure the integrity of our LEMR program here in Richmond, so I'll continue to monitor this and keep harping on us doing asset testings with respect to this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for this report. I like the numbers that you've put forward. I do sort of start going down the rabbit hole a little bit of, you know, not everyone put into an RSP, not everyone was able to put into a pension plan, so I think of, like, someone like my grandmother, for example, who, you know, she and my grandfather had a store together, they bought their house, they paid it off, and that was her nest egg. So if she sells, let's say she lives in some little apartment that she bought, she nets out $350,000 out of it, but she has no RSP, she has nothing else, she sells the apartment, now lives in this other thing, and has to live off that amount, but she has no RSPs because they didn't put their money into that, they put it into their home at the time. She doesn't have, she, you know, she didn't work outside the home, so she doesn't have any other pensions or anything else. So if her only source of income is then living off the nest egg of the old little apartment that they lived in together, now what? Like, do we have some other mechanism of thinking about how we might assess a fairness on this? Does that make sense? Because, you know, if someone's got $3 million in an RSP, but they have no income, it's like, well, okay, because we don't look at the RSPs, but maybe we do want to look at the whole thing in totality of when we are trying to determine someone's need, because I think you'll be able to see their need more closely when these things are seen together.
So through the Chair to Counselor Lou, if you go to page GP 185, and go to section 2.2A, just under here, we do have a provision where someone, building a new building, could actually come to council for a consideration for a higher asset test limit, and, you know, that might be specifically for seniors' housing, because what we are hearing from the operators of seniors' housing is that they believe it should be higher. They, you know, they do encounter people like, as you're explaining, that have all of their nest egg just in one bid, and they don't have any income, and so they would like to see it higher than $100,000. They would, you know, prefer to see it upwards of $350,000.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lyd.
Thank you, your worship, and, yeah, thanks for coming back with that. This was in response to, we didn't know what the set rate was going to be for the parking, right? That first part of it, so I'm glad you came back with that, and that makes sense. And, you know, on GP 179, so it says the assets that are included in the calculation and the ones that are excluded, and so the RSPs are excluded, and so that makes sense to me that a senior would need a higher limit, because once they do cash in some RSPs, they've got to live on that forever with whatever care that they have, if they don't have any other real estate or anything else. But what I don't, what is not included in here, or clear to me, is if TFSAs are in the first, in the included or in the excluded.
So through the Chair to Counselor Glenders, we could include that, if that's something you're looking for. I mean, that would fall under the category of RSPs or RIF as well, so being that that could be used for retirement income, we could include it, or we could leave it out.
Well, I kind of want to know if it is or if it isn't, because if you're saying that you look at the stocks, bonds, terms, deposit, mutual funds, and cash, in my opinion, most likely, people's TFSAs would be included in that first category. So I'm just wondering which it is, or if it's, they're very popular now, many people are using them. I just want to give one example. I have a friend who's a senior, she's no longer working, she's a very small monthly income, her CCP with some disability, which does not cover her rent, which is about $1,400 a month, she brings in about $1,200 a month or something like that, so to get an extra few hundred dollars a month just to be able to live on, she got a very small inheritance, it's about $50,000, so you can see how $100,000 is actually quite reasonable, if it's considering two people, you might get $50,000 from your, from a deceased parent, and that's the only asset you have. It's put into a TFA, and then the small amount of interest that you generate off that just helps you get by day to day. So I just want to know if that situation is included in the limit calculation.
Through your worship. Through your worship, Counselor Glenders, it's not explicitly identified, but I think we would treat it as a liquid asset, so it would be included in the asset limit. The other thing I'd just point out for the committee is that with the income, the third kind of component of the policy is this income exemption, or the exception, so part of the intent of this is to give staff some level of discretionary authority, if you will, to make some of these decisions as the information becomes available.
Okay, thanks.
All right, the motion's on the floor. Let's call the question, all those in favor, those opposed, that is carried. Thank you, staff. We'll go to housing priorities, grant program allocation. Greg, you're with us on this one?
I have a comment on this one.
Okay, what do you want to say to add to your report?
Nothing to add, your worship.
All right, we'll go to questions, Counselor Day.
Thank you very much. So am I correctly assuming that the funds are coming from the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, the Housing Accelerator Fund?
Correct.
Yep, great, so that Accelerator Fund is really helping Richmond out. Okay, good, thank you.
Counselor Heed.
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions regarding the Kiwanis Railway LEMR development, and originally, they were going to go 29 LEMR units and 29 market units. Now they've decided to go 58 LEMR units. But there are several concerns, as you've identified on page 193, with respect to this, including their, when they increase it, they would have to come back to us, you know, all of that, they've got to deal with the transfer of SD Railway, which is the private owner of the property. So are we kind of a little premature on agreeing to this when they have so much to do and submitting another application to us because we approve their rezoning based on something else?
Through the Chair to Counselor Heed. Giving them some funding certainty at this stage would help that process, and then would look to secure those commitments through milestone requirements through their contribution agreement.
So if they don't, if for some reason it doesn't happen, then we're not committed to providing the funding. That's what I read into this, correct?
Through your worship, Counselor Heed, that is correct. The one thing I would say is that with all of these applications, there are several additional opportunities for council to make a decision, so the intention here is to set aside the money for it to be, as Cade mentions, there to be an awareness of the applicant, that they have access to this money subject to addressing certain requirements.
Good. My next question regarding the DCC offset application, and this is to 6071 Azure Road Development, and you can see that they've, I guess voluntarily, canceled their development permit, and they're going to make changes to the project design. Why is that? We spent so much time on that, and they spent so much energy and time on trying to get that pushed through. I just don't understand what is going on here, and if we're now starting to change this development this late in the game, you know, that's, are we talking about some financial concerns here, or are we talking about something less significant?
Through the Chair to Counselor Heed, what the applicant has indicated to date is that they wish to cancel their development permit in order to help fund changes to the proposed development permit. They have indicated that their intention is to try to phase the development, and the previous proposal, as proposed, didn't really allow for the phasing of development, coincident with the financing that they are also trying to achieve for the project through CMHC loans.
So would they still be able to qualify for DCC offset applications at this point, when they haven't even gone through what the iteration is going to be going forward?
Through your worship, Counselor Heed, what's being proposed here would be an upset limit, so if at the end of the day, through the DP review process, they change the scale and scope of their project in such a way that reduces the amount of affordable housing, then the DCC waiver would similarly scale down.
Thank you.
Counselor McNulty.
Just quickly, we keep throwing this word, "affordable rental homes." What is an affordable rental home?
Through the Chair to Counselor McNulty, the affordable definition in this case was anything below the average rent in Richmond, so equivalent to our LEMR program or our moderate-market rental program.
So they're not affordable. I guess, your worship, I get tired of seeing the word "affordable rental" out there, and we bury our head in the sand, and low-market rental, well, I guess a two-bedroom Richmond's about $2,500 to $2,700 a month for rental, that's not affordable. I guess that's what I'm getting, we're given, not that I mind giving somebody $2 million, in another case, $4 million, but when these are built, they're not affordable. We're kidding ourselves, say, like we say, "low-market rental," and I think we've got to give our head a shake on it, but if you said low, 29-low-end, no, they're going to be affordable rental, but there's no low-end market rental. I just have some difficulty with this, this whole thing. We let it go, development after development, and I think we've got, we're not consistent. And I'm not picking on it, I'm disappointed Azure Road has gone the way it is, he's been trying for years for it, you know, we, we're not doing ourselves any favors of moving ahead on it, and if you think you're supporting low-income housing or affordable rental housing in Richmond, we give our head a shake. I'd like to see it defined on each of these, and I'd also like to see what they are actually doing. What does a building look like? You know, a rental home, is it detached, is it townhomes? I'm not, I don't pick on this one, but all the others. When I see 330 rental units, you mentioned a phasing end, et cetera, what is it going to be? And there's 110 affordable rental, are they going to be integrated? I mean, we're getting, we're just throwing out 1.764 million, but we don't know what we're sending it up for, other than, I'm not criticizing you, but I like to see what is this application on there, and what exactly is it, and how is it going to be built? And are they just going to take that and sit on it for a while?
Any comment?
Nothing to add in response.
All right, may I have a motion?
So.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you, gents. Establishing a Housing Authority referral response, number two. Peter Russell, what have you got to tell us about this?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chair.
Okay, comments, questions? So more information as you get, under your recommendation, as you get an actual project that you think is a good candidate, we'll hear more about it, including, well, all the organizational aspects of it, but also the cost aspects of it. Correct. And the investment that we're going to have to make, and, you know, all the ramifications. Okay, Counselor Day.
Thank you very much. So it's, there's two options, the Housing Society, which is what Squamish has, where they just run the housing, then there's Housing Authority, which is what Burnaby has, where they put $2 million in an annual budget and $475,000 for capital expenditures. So, well, why, why do we have to choose one of the two? Why couldn't we just have a housing office? Because I know we have a full-time staff right now that does a registry of the housing, and also does a list of approved renters, so it feels to me like we've got three options, not two.
Through the Chair to Counselor Day, the housing office is a department of the city, so that wouldn't change, that doesn't change.
No, but the analysis of it will include that.
That's correct.
If we do nothing and leave it with the housing office, then what are the ramifications of that?
Correct. If there's an assessment, and an opportunity for development or purchasing or acquiring land or housing, noted in the report, those options will be assessed, so through the Housing Authority, through the city, essentially, the housing office, or otherwise.
So, but, like, the housing office, it sounds like it's just a clearinghouse for staff to register the housing and register the renters, that they wouldn't get involved in running any affordable or LEMR housing, they would just, or building it or promoting it, is that, like, is that the difference?
The housing office is, again, a department of the city, so currently, our role is identified in the report on page 205, GP 205, so certainly, staff do monitor the LEMR program, make adjustments, there's some noted adjustments here, and through the housing office, we work with partners like BC Housing and others to support developments in the city.
So are you recommending the Housing Society or the Housing Authority?
The analysis focuses on the Housing Authority, because the city would have ultimately more control over the entity and the outcome, and the recommendation is that as those opportunities arise, that staff bring those forward.
Okay, so now we would have a separate business, really, that we would be the one shareholder, just, this is like a repeat of the Oval.
It would have the same structure.
Same structure.
In terms of it being a corporation.
So what about, I mean, I'd like to see staff involvement and have managers be part of that board, is that envisioned, or?
The report, through the Chair to Counselor Day, the report does speak to the type and governance options. Certainly, it could be staff, just staff, it could be a range. So that would be, I guess, in essence, a future decision. So if an opportunity arises, if we bring that project forward, that would include financial impact, but also governance and issues as well.
So you're asking us to choose one of the two, but not the housing office? Yeah, I know we already have a housing office, but you're asking us to move forward with either Housing Society or Housing Authority?
This, the recommendation's to bring forward information around the Housing Authority, which would be a municipal corporation.
Yeah.
When the opportunity arises.
On a case-by-case basis. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Glenders.
Thank you. Through the mayor to you, you. This is great, I think we're getting closer to seeing the scenarios and how it could play out and what role it could play. I agree with GP 207, showing, you know, which area the Housing Authority would tackle, the purpose-built rental, low-end market rental, and non-market social housing. We already do the non-market social housing with our nonprofits, and we do low-end market rental in all of our buildings, so I could see where, if an opportunity comes up to do just a purpose-built rental through the Housing Authority, I think we're getting closer to being able to take a jump on this. What I'm just wondering is, like, we've already had a couple of things come forward, where it's, now we've got the land, and we want to do something, but we don't have this yet. So, like, how are we going to be able to act on it and incorporate and create the board, and create the terms of reference and everything in time to do something without opportunities just slipping away?
Through the Chair to Counselor Glenders, that's the intention, is that we wouldn't let those slip away. If there's an opportunity and we assess it and come back to council, it'll be either updating council on the analysis or recommending that we pursue a Housing Authority.
Okay, and, yeah, because I just want to say, you know, my vision on this, just looking at Vienna, Austria, for example, and I actually meant to send all of you an article about this last week, and I sent it to myself, and then I lost it, so I'll still do that. But in Vienna, the municipal government builds 12,000 units of housing a year, it's not deep police subsidizer, it's geared to income, it's all just geared-to-income housing, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom, over 56% of the population rents because of this program, so when, and you've got your two-bedroom unit, and then you have a couple more kids, and you say, "I need to move into a three-bedroom unit," and then they move you to a three-bedroom unit, you have it for life, and all the revenue from the rent pays for the construction of 12,000 units a year, it's all, you know, self-funding, but we have to jump off somewhere and agree to an amount, and sort of where the, on GP 213 comes in, so it's showing how you get the mortgage covering from BC Housing, you get the mortgage covering from CMHC. you get the mortgage covering from CMAHC. What I don't know is for points five and six there, no capital grants from senior levels of government, no operating subsidy from senior level of government. Would this just be, wouldn't that just be mostly for purpose-built rental? Because if we were doing deeply subsidized or social housing, wouldn't there be those grant opportunities as well?
Through the chair to Counselor Glanders, they arise through programs like the Community Housing Fund or B.C. Builds. This analysis assumes that is not part of the equation. The Housing Authority could apply, if it's established, to those types of projects. This assumes that it's a standalone project advanced by the city and the challenges that arise with that.
Okay, we've got to move on.
Okay.
Counselor Heath.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't think we've hit the mark on this. I'm sorry to say this, but I'm going to say it. I don't think we have hit the mark. Given our experience, our recent experience with the Oval Corp. and the debacles we faced there, some of the criticism with Lulule Island Energy Corp. or company, I'm not really looking at forming another corp. And that's something we have to be cognizant of, and I don't think the society hits it well. Maybe we've got to do this, you know, and I'm knocking around in circles. You may think I am. But you've exhausted the options. They don't look at, maybe we've got to do all this in-house. Maybe we've got to look at a separate department division within local government in order for us to accomplish what we need with respect to this. And maybe that is to expand your housing office or give it some other more comprehensive encompassing title in order for it to work and make sure it's staffed to the level it can so we can continue to get those public dollars that are available to us. I just don't want to see a corp set up again, and hopefully, we won't in Richmond for at least my time here. But I just want to, I want to apologize if you think I'm going around circles. I'm not, I think you've eliminated some things in my mind, and I think that's encouraging, but I don't think we've hit the mark yet.
All right, Counselor McNulty.
Just quickly, I can echo some of those comments. I thought we were asking through you, your worship, whether we're going to have a city Housing Authority or not. Seems like council's going around the round and doesn't know what it wants. We just approved $10 million for affordable housing. Who's going to administer that to make sure Richmond residents get first call on it? We just gave away $10 million five minutes ago. Are we not going to now administer? There's no case-by-case, we've got five cases here. I've got 200, 300, 110 units, 68 units, and 785 units. I guess Richmond residents will get first call on affordable housing. I mean, I'm sorry, following Counselor Heath. We've missed the mark. We didn't, we totally on it. How are we going to administer them? We just gave the money away so that we'd have them. Who's going to do that when they come back? Again, maybe I'm wrong, your worship, on the original referral, but council members, correct me if I'm wrong. But affordable rental, we were going to administer it through the city. That's what we're looking at. And if I'm wrong, or not, okay, I'll correct myself. But we gave our five organizations $10 million bucks to go ahead and do this, and then who's going to do it at the end of the day? I don't think you can answer that. But I think we need to answer that, and we haven't answered that. So case-by-case, we've got five cases on the table as far as I'm concerned already. I don't know how we're going to do it. So I think this should be referred back, and we come back with. I don't care which way we go. Either we're going to go with an authority or we're not, and then let's stop talking about it if we're not. Okay? Because that's, that's not happening, your worship. Everybody's sitting here, yeah, we're going to go this, and we're going to do this. Sorry, folks, you missed, you missed the boat. Again, I come back to this council making a decision. Don't blame me, Mr. Russell, it's not his fault. We've got to give him concrete direction of what we want. This does not give us a Housing Authority. Okay? Nowhere does it. It just passes a buck down the road. Either you want it or you don't. Then let's vote for it one way or the other. Let's put the resources there. And if we've got to set up something in-house and hire staff, let's do it. But to think we're going to go on and we can stand and boast our check, put out our chest and say, look, we support affordable housing, we're not doing it. Okay, I'm sorry. Beat me up, okay, I'm from Missouri. But I'm sorry, no disrespect to Mr. Russell. This is not what I thought was coming forward. Thank you for bringing what you did forward. But, your worship, I think we should be given clearer direction on this.
I have to say that I've, I must have heard 50 comments by members at this table, all of them talking about a Housing Authority. That's, I heard that over and over. Can't wait to get it. But taking the point that in the staff recommendations, that opportunities to establish a Housing Authority be brought forward, we could simply make it more general to say, opportunities to establish a Housing Authority or other housing structure be brought forward. The idea of being there, when you think you've got a good case for it, you'll bring it forward and you'll give us, you know, the options, Housing Authority, Department of the, you know, the Housing, Department of the City, or whatever else you want.
Well, I would agree with that, your worship, but are we going to put resources to it so we can do it?
Well, that's, that's what will be identified.
Okay, I need some resources and a budget to come forward to say, this is the plan, you either want it or you don't.
But that's, that's what you're coming forward with. Structure, investment, finances, you know, all those aspects of how it'll work.
Correct. Through the chair, Mr. Chair, that would, that is correct. So as the opportunity arises, that would be the scope of the analysis. Economic governance issues would be assessed against current departments, against Housing Authority options or others, as you noted.
Let's go to other questions, because we really need to keep it moving along. Counselor Al. Counselor Al.
Good, thank you. Well, I think it's good that I'm pulling up on Counselor McNulty's comments. Well, I think perhaps I haven't been myself clear when I first asked for this kind of a report. I'm disappointed with the report that, now, in my original version, I hope that we can come up with some kind of report to talk about how the city can be more involved in building affordable housing. And the situation right now, you said, yes, we have programs, other programs. But as in page 205 says that the housing market is not right right now. So we could have all those numbers in planning, but the dealers are not building. So it can be a different situation in which the government or the municipal government can be more involved and can be more active in building, even at these difficult times. Now, Laura mentioned about Vienna, right? Actually, in Hong Kong is another example. Hong Kong could be one of the most expensive rural estate places in the world. But at one time, 60% of the people are living in government-funded housing. And they were both mostly built by the government, either by direct investment or through a Housing Authority. So those are the kinds of research that I want to see. You know, if in Richmond, we want to get more active in, you know, providing housing to the low-income people, what can we do? Whether or not we can have a Housing Authority of that kind that we can provide that, the supply. So at the end, on page 211, the, I mean, the last paragraph before a financial impact, the conclusion said, okay, we can consider about establishing Housing Authority until such time as attainable opportunities present. What does that mean? What are the conditions that, you know, would retain these are the right conditions that we can go forward? So I don't see those kinds of information. Now, and also, I'm disappointed that only one sentence, if I haven't overlooked any other things, page 209. Only one sentence was referred, for making a reference to the Burnaby Housing Authority. I also expect that in this report, we can learn from or draw reference from other cities, other places in Canada, which has established the Housing Authority. So that, you know, we can have a better understanding of what it meant by Housing Authority, what they can do, how they are doing it, and what has been the outcome. So that, you know, we can, we can learn from those places. So I don't know, you know, I don't know whether I should support the staff recommendation, but this is not what I expected, and this is not my ambition in the beginning. I can just say that.
We're going to move along very quickly. And, you know, if you've, if you've spoken before, then we're going to keep it very short. Counselor Lou.
Thank you, worship. Thank you for the report. I appreciate a lot of what you've said here. I think I've heard from a lot of people at the table, too, and it sounds like there's a lot of feeling to keep our housing office. I don't, I don't think we actually want to be a landlord with the risks and responsibilities of that. I think we, you know, we hear about other places like Hong Kong. They've had issues with, they have challenges getting people to move along. So their kids live with them, they have a couple bedrooms. The kids move out, they keep the couple bedrooms because there's no mechanism to move people along. And then if the city's kicking people out of their homes, now we're wearing it instead of actually having a mechanism to ensure that everybody has the right place, right-sized place to live. And isn't that fair? Which one's fair? I think we're going to end up in conflicts of interest. So unlike Whistler, who has more land and they build their housing in places where there's not existing housing, we're looking to densify. Well, we're, how many projects have we seen where we're looking to densify a project in a neighborhood? Everybody in the neighborhood comes to our public hearing and says, we don't want it for this, that, or the other reason. And then we maybe make the developer change it, maybe we send the whole thing away. But we can listen objectively. But if it's our project, how do we then objectively listen to people at a public hearing and say, actually, we're still going to build it in your neighborhood? We don't care. And the most cost-effective thing is to go up this many stories and to jam this many people in it because we're running it. I think there's a conflict of interest. Do you want to be in that middle of the conflict of interest? I think our housing office does a really good job and keeps us out of that game. I think there's a different standard of care if the city runs it. I think we ran into something similar with the sign issue, that we're going to end up with a charter challenge on discrimination. If we say it's only Richmond residents, what does that mean? You got to bring your yearbook and show your picture from your yearbook that you went to school here and you're an old Richmond person? Or you just say, well, hey, I've lived here for an hour and a half. I went down to the ICBC, got my driver's license changed. I'm a Richmond resident. So how do you, like, what does that mean? That you're a Richmond resident? And can we actually keep people out based on not ties to Richmond? Like, and is that going to end up with a charter challenge on us? So are we going to end up in a bigger mess than we're hoping for? We can't build cheaper than the market can. There's no way. Like, we're looking at building a field house for $1,000 a square foot. There's no new building. Richmond Center's not being built for that price. So why do we think that we're going to suddenly be able to do all this magic cheaper? We're not going to be able to build it cheaper. Leave it to the market, and we have all these other mechanisms to ensure that it happens the way we really want it to. We've, we've put in this other thing for how, whether or not they can charge for parking. We've got asset tests, we've got income tests, we've got other tests to make sure that the right people are in and that it's being run properly. Let other people deal with the headache of being a residential landlord. I don't think council needs to be in the middle of that.
All right, Counselor Hobbs.
Thanks, and through the chair, and I'll try to be quick. First of all, thanks for the report. A lot of work has been done on this. And I just want to highlight for the public, anyway, the history that's contained in the report. And, you know, the LEMA unit 625, I'm not going to read it all out, but there's good information in there, and progress has been made. In terms of the society or a corporation, I will echo the comments Counselor Heath and I think Counselor McNulty made about that. I'm not sold on a separate legal entity as a Housing Authority. And I'll comment on that in a couple of minutes. But just as if through a couple other points on that. When I look at Burnaby's example, those are huge numbers that we have in there, like $100 million worth of financing available to them. It's huge, yet it wouldn't build one large building. 475 contribution, 475,000 contribution in 2024, over and above the $2 million annual budget. That's a significant input of cash, and I'm not clear what that's for. But what it says to me is that this is a huge financial burden to take on. And I'm not sure that the Housing Authority is the way to go. And just to finish off with the resident issue, I think that we've had previous conversations in committee that there are ways through agreements, whether it be with B.C. Housing or other agreements, that we can look at having Richmond residents prioritize. You can't ban people, but it can be a priority, and I think it can be built into future agreements. Kind of a rhetorical question, because I think the answer to that has already been said is yes. So I'll just wrap up by saying this. If you want some firm comments as to what I think we should do in the future, not precluding any, you know, report or any other option. But I think building up the housing office within Richmond with staff gives the city a couple advantages. We can work with partners, we can apply for funds, but it also gives us control over what we do because staff will take direction from council. And the problem I have with going outside with a Housing Authority, and Counselor Heath kind of touched on it, you know, we've experienced some issues with different corporations and boards. And I'm not sure whether I want to get into another corporation with the city at this time. So I look forward to the next report. I will support the recommendation today, and I look forward to another.
Okay. Thanks. We've got Counselor Glanders, we've got Counselor Day. I'm going to give you one question each.
Okay, just real quick. We did vote on moving forward with the Housing Authority. We know that a couple of counselors don't want to build housing for people, but we, the majority, voted on moving forward. So I just want to know what, how are we moving forward? When do you think the next time we're going to get a scenario is going to come to us and say, let's establish this? Because I don't think that because of the way that the Oval was set up is a reason to deter us from setting up another corporation. I think we can do it the right way and have a lot of oversight and have it with our housing office staff plus a few more experts and get this done. And I think we should get some more information about Vienna, Singapore, Hong Kong, other cities that have done it. And I just want to know, so when will we hear from this again? I just don't want this to disappear.
Through the chair to Counselor Glanders, staff is going to be defined by the opportunity. We know of opportunities that relate to some, I can't, I can't speak to some of those items. I'd have to do so enclosed. But, you know, within the year, there might be an opportunity. And ongoingly, there'll be opportunities for us to look at that and bring that back to council.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Day.
I think we need to refer this back. Just go to the conclusion. Establish a Housing Authority for consideration on a case-by-case basis. What does that mean? I mean, either we're building a Housing Authority or we're not.
Yeah, but you've heard what I'm going to add.
Yeah, I think we have to refer this back for clarity.
Well, it, we're not going ahead with anything. So it is kind of a referral. I mean, that's the whole contemplation. Counselor Wolf.
Yeah, very briefly, as we've heard before, I will be supporting what's before us. I would like us to go ahead with the Housing Authority, as I've previously mentioned. What this does is defer that establishment. But as we heard from staff, the director of the Office of Housing, which is great that we have it and it's progressing in the right direction, we very likely will have a case that gets this started in the short term. So I will await that process. Thanks.
Okay, in, in terms of a resolution, my suggestion is that the first line of this recommendation read that options and opportunities to establish a Housing Authority or other housing structure be brought forward for council consideration, and the rest of it would be the same. So, okay, so it's more of a flexible thing as opposed to a direction. So that's moved and seconded. Everybody clear on that one? Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried with Counselor Lou opposed. Okay, brings us to the works yard. Now, we've got a public hearing at 5:30. Also, food is back there if anyone wants to go and get some. Martin, what do you want to tell us in addition to your report?
I have nothing to add, Chair, but I have to answer any questions.
This has been thoroughly vetted by the Oversight Committee and, you know, everybody. This has been thoroughly vetted by the Oversight Committee and, you know, everybody.
To the Chair, that is correct.
Okay. Counselor Wolf.
Thank you, through your worship. I just have two quick questions. One is related to the Table 1. We have Works Yard program areas on page 221. It shows that our yard storage area is going down by sixty-two thousand, sixty-two thousand square feet. And I know that's going somewhere. So if I take the conditioned storage and the covered storage and combine those, those are going up by thirteen thousand square feet. So there's still quite a gap between the sixty-two and the thirteen thousand square feet. Will we still be able to have enough yard storage space?
Through the Chair to Counselor Wolf, we have looked at optimizing our storage and stacking and reorganizing and trying to limit the space where it's wasted for storage. So we have come up with efficiencies on how to store materials and have unified the storage versus it being all over the site.
Awesome. Thank you. My second and final question is in relation to the unallocated land. So there's the description about it on 222, and then on 225, there's a map that shows it at the north end. Could you just comment, like, because it's not that clear in the paragraph description there, like, it's owned by the city, it's used by the city? Why is it unaccount, unallocated? Why not start allocating it now?
Through the Chair to Counselor Wolf. So the city-owned properties on Linus Lane is 30.2 acres. The Works Yard, through our programming, is going to be 22 acres. The recycling depot, the Parks House, and the skateboard are not part, are not part of the, the project, and that equals about 3.7 acres. So the remaining unallocated land would result after our project completion is about 4.5 acres that we are requesting to start the planning for through council.
So it, it's going to be allocated as, like, temporary layover kind of space or not even that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Wolf. Once we complete the project, this will be an empty area at the north side of the site that does not have any programming. So we are asking council, what can that be used for? We would like to.
Great. Thanks for that.
Counselor Day.
Thank you very much. This is an example of the Major Construction Oversight Committee making excellent suggestions, and I can see that staff worked with that committee. I'm really pleased to see that we go from twelve years to, to, twelve years to ten years, that we are going to do four to three phases. We're going to build the admin building and then the workshop underneath. It'll be eighty-three feet tall along Linus Lane. I think this is making excellent use of the property, and we can get going right away. And then once we get those services moved into the new building, that opens up the rest of it for the next phase. So I think staff have done a great job of working with the committee and coming up with really creative, cost-effective ways to move forward. So kudos.
Thank you.
Counselor Heed.
Yes. Quickly, this is with regard to the Oversight Committee. So the recommendation, was it supported by them or what are the feedback? And my second question is, when are we going to get updates from the Oversight Committee on a regular basis?
Through the Chair to Counselor Heed. The members of the Oversight Committee with Counselor Glanders as liaison supported our approach and our three-phase approach versus the four. The committee provided us with several comments and, and suggestions. We have reviewed them. In some cases, we have taken them on as, as they, they fit into our plan and provide a more efficient way of delivery. Others, we have responded to them, and, and they have, they have agreed with our assessments. We have scheduled meetings at certain milestones. In this report, we have, we have attached the two meeting minutes, the minutes of the meeting of the two meetings that we did have. Should council want us to provide the minutes of the meeting within our monthly report for the Works Yard, we would be happy to do so.
All right.
I'm just looking for updates on a regular basis. Thank you.
Counselor McNulty.
Yeah, just quickly, I'd like to see the Oversight Committee minutes. I think it's very important that we do too, too diligent, make sure they're public, though. Just have a quick, quick question. The unallocated land, who's going to bring those ideas back? I, I'm going to say right now, we are not going to sell it. Okay? I'm going to repeat it again to council members, we are not going to sell it. Come up with something creative idea, put a medical clinic, whatever or not, not while I'm on council anyhow. That's all I'll say on that one. So, but thank you for that good report. To come down two years, we've got a budget increase of 74 million bucks?
Through the Chair to.
What's happening? We breaking contracts or something?
Through the Chair to Counselor McNulty, reference to the comment regarding the four phases and making it three phases. We have brought in items from Phase Two, which is the workshops, and added them to the admin building and called it the main building. So we, what we were trying to do is reduce the, the time, reduce the risk, and we have added it. By moving items from the Phase Two phase of, of the project to bringing it into Phase One, we will need another 74 million dollars to build.
Oh.
We're, we're just moving, we're in the scope from Phase Two to Phase One.
All right. Doesn't read that way, but okay. Thank you for that. No, I appreciate what you're doing and moving along, and I appreciate getting the monthly reports. I think it's important that we have them and that they are public as well. So, and also with the Oversight Committee minutes. Thank you.
Counselor Glanders.
Thank you, worship. And yes, thank you for bringing this forward, and it is too bad that it's on such a huge agenda because we could spend a lot more time talking about it. And regarding the Oversight Committee, yeah, I can assure everybody that the committee is extremely involved and they, you know, really care about council getting all the value and, and, and the people and, and getting the program delivered, you know, properly without issue. And they can only do so much right now because we don't have the detailed drawings. So just want to, you know, point out, on GP 219 is the analysis of the Oversight Committee's sort of general areas of what has been discussed so far. I have a question about, before this report came out, there's a lot of, of, of committee, Oversight Committee comments that were delivered by email, right? So it wasn't part of our formal meeting because we had the meeting, we've had three meetings already. And, and then there was a ton of feedback given that was, you know, tried to be encapsulated for this report today. So are those emails going to be put into a minutes that everybody can review? And if there's anything that I can do as the liaison to that committee to help reporting and be more clear to all of council on a regular basis, so we can work on that, too.
Through the Chair to Counselor Glanders, we'd be happy to add it to the next minutes of the meeting and, and share it with council as well.
Yeah, I think that the content of those emails are really, really important because it's, 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 there's a whole bunch of stuff, right? And I, and just correct me if I'm wrong, just so this is leading to a question. The sort of the main thing is that we've got to have a really large contingency here because we don't have the detailed drawings. And the hugest, you know, part of it is the ground improvements. How are we going to, how is the overall circulation going to, going to happen in the end? And what, what things are going to change when we do Phase One and we've done all the ground improvements for Phase One? What, what could change to impact ground on Two and Three? So the sooner we have detailed drawings for all of it, the better. So do you, do you have an idea of when we're going to have detailed drawings of Phase One and then also Two and Three?
Through the Chair to Counselor Glanders. For Phase One, once council approves, we will proceed, we will start working on detailed design. We will come back to council for character, how the building will actually look. And at that time, we would have more, more information for council, but the detailed design will take a period of time, close to eight months. During that time, we will expedite the, the ground densification and the soil work. So we will not stop the project, and we will start designing Phase Two while we're constructing Phase One. So the minute we finish, we can start Phase Two. That is not determined yet. We, we can come back to council and give you projected dates for, for these. It is shown in the report when we are starting, where the funding is. It is on page, excuse me. It is on page 226. You will see that the Works Yard replacement project is scheduled. It would show you step by step when the construction is happening. At every contact point and milestone, we will be coming back to council for, for that phase or for that milestone.
I just wonder if there's a way to get Phase Two and Three design done together during Phase One construction.
Well, you're the liaison, so why don't you have that conversation directly with staff?
And just, just, just one follow-up. There was talk, you know, we, we're looking at the plans and looking at the land the way it is now, and it's hard to envision, you know, it being compacted in the two levels. And there was talk about, you know, what if we end up needing that unallocated land and, and maybe we need to build it bigger? And I just want the committee to know that, council to know, sorry, that the Oversight Committee was actually looking at, can we make it even smaller to, to make it more cost-effective? And, and there's going to be a lot of wasted space. So if anything, it could have gone a little smaller than bigger. So I just want to assure council that that unallocated land, but our, our staff had a good reason to not make it any smaller, but the unallocated land truly is unallocated land once we stop using it for overflow parking during construction.
All right. May I have a motion? So that's moved, is it seconded and seconded? Further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried with Counselor Lou opposed. All right. And the last item is this Deloitte recommendation. It is Counselor Heed's motion, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Heed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to read three short paragraphs as, as a background and then the motion. "In a time when integrity, accountability, and transparency are crucial, political figures must set the standard. The mayor of Richmond should voluntarily adopt Deloitte's suggestion to limit total compensation as outlined in the Metro Vancouver Board Review. This action would help restore public confidence and promote the prudent use of taxpayers' funds. When leaders are compensated excessively, it conveys a message that they value their own compensation more than the needs of the public. As many residents grapple with increasing living expenses, it is disheartening to see some public officials receiving substantial salaries. By capping total compensation, the mayor would demonstrate a commitment to equity and show that community service is the top priority. Additionally, embracing this recommendation would play a significant role in rebuilding trust in local governance. Taking this initiative would send a powerful message about the importance of serving the people of Richmond over personal gain." The motion is two-part. Number one, that the mayor, as our representative on the Board of Directors for Metro Vancouver, introduce a motion amending their remuneration bylaw. That's the Greater Vancouver Regional District Regional Board and Committee Remuneration bylaw number 1057, 2007, to allow directors the flexibility to voluntarily refuse compensation for serving on the board or committees, and that the mayor voluntarily accept the cap or maximum remuneration threshold for total income from all local government-related appointments as detailed in recommendation number 49 of the Deloitte Metro Vancouver Governance
I'm going to reply to that because it's obviously directed at me. And I, I have actually committed this to writing, which all of council has. But I, I think it bears, just like Counselor Heed wanted to read out his, his rationale in his motion, I think that this really does clarify and expand on so many of the factors that are at play here, none of which are, are referred to in this background or this motion. First of all, the focus of this is that the mayor should do various things. Well, I want to remind everybody, there are three representatives who sit on the Vancouver Board of Directors, Metro Vancouver Board. And there's a number, probably most other members of council who have been appointed sit on committees. Secondly, a specific resolution regarding Metro Vancouver remuneration was proposed and remains outstanding with the MVRD Board, and I refer to Attachment 1. And it, and this is outstanding. They propose changes to remuneration bylaw 2C, create a total limit on director remuneration, but also there's a number of other aspects to it. Next, a Governance Committee has been appointed to review the governance structure of Metro Vancouver, including the entire issue of remuneration. And so if you look at Attachment 2, you will see the terms of reference for that Governance Committee, which includes on the second page, remuneration. In law, a Metro Vancouver Board member has a fiduciary duty to that organization and consequently cannot be bound by any directions given by a third party, including a member of city council. And then in reviewing and determining levels of remuneration for officers or board members, as you will see in Attachment 3, Metro Vancouver is only able to govern itself. And so that, that Deloitte recommendation, I mean, there's, there's a number of aspects to it. But Metro Vancouver cannot determine any other organization, what their remuneration structure would be. And then, and also important, following recent public discussion, Metro Vancouver has significantly reduced the number of committee meetings for which remuneration is provided to the attendees. Thus, the remuneration levels for such attendance this year will be reduced from previous levels. So to the extent there have been some changes already made in terms of the remuneration, there are more that are contemplated and waiting for the Governance Committee to do its work. And one of the things is that the number of meetings for which a stipend is paid has been significantly reduced. So, so what you see today, or what you saw six months ago, is definitely different than what you see now. And so I say in conclusion, any discussion on further action regarding appropriate levels of Metro Vancouver remuneration and related issues should await receipt of the conclusions of the Metro Vancouver Governance Committee. And so as a result of that, I am moving that we table this motion.
Second.
All right? We are now, so the motion on the floor is to table this motion that's on the agenda. And the only, the only debate is on the merits of tabling. And why I propose to table it is because this whole issue is being looked at in its entirety. And so why are we rushing to suggest something right now when you're going to have a very thorough, in-depth review and look at the situation? And then if you think that it's still appropriate, well, we'll deal with it at that time. So that's why that motion is on the floor. And I will go to Counselor Glanders on the merits of tabling.
Thank you, worship. With the memorandum that we received from you regarding what Metro is responsible for and what they aren't, I don't know who's responsible for setting levels of remuneration for TransLink, ECOM, et cetera. So if we were to table it, could we also come back with more information? Because we're going to table it until aft, if it passes, it would be tabled until after Metro comes back with its analysis. And then could we also have the information about who's responsible for setting TransLink, et cetera? And, because that's going to determine how it goes into this whole totality of total remuneration.
More information can be provided on that, but I can tell you that in terms of the mayor's council at TransLink, that is set by legislation. Some of it is, mayor's council or board is set by legislation, other is set by the organization itself. I imagine the other organizations set their own, own level of remuneration. That's what it is. So, Counselor Wolf.
Yes. First off, in your memo, that is your reasoning for tabling it. The date is July twenty, July 17th, or today's date, when we received it three hours before this meeting, is July 21st. So you've, you've given us very little time to consider these reasons for tabling it. And also, there's some inaccuracies on here. Delta's mayor was removed from his, by his council to, from his board responsibilities. Thank you.
No. The, the appointment to Metro Vancouver is, is from, to the board, is by the council. And so that council decided that they wanted a different representative. So they're not telling Metro Vancouver what to do. They're changing their representation. Counselor Heed.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mayor. And I, I recognize how that motion supersedes the motion that, uh, was put on the floor, and I, I understand that, uh, it would have been nice to get this sooner than 12 o'clock today. It would have been really nice to have an opportunity to review this. Um, that's, uh, quite unfortunate. Um, and I guess, a, a couple of questions to you, uh, Mayor, uh, is, how long do you think we're going to table this for? Are we gonna wait a year, two years, or, or, when you sit on the Governance Review Committee?
I don't.
Not anymore?
Do not.
I, okay. So how long do you figure we're going to have to wait until we get something from Metro Vancouver? And as councillor Galanders alluded to, we, we, there's some other areas on this, or, but, you know, you've been a, a, a member of Metro for years. Are we loo- looking at a, a prolonged period before, uh, there's some action from Metro Vancouver?
Well, the, the motion is already on the floor, so there has been action. Secondly, the Governance Committee has already met, and I understand that they have meetings through the fall. More than that, I can't tell you, other than I, from my impression, and councillor Lew or McNulty can comment on this, my impression is that the chair wants to get to the bottom of the situation as soon as reasonably possible. Would you?
Well, you know, certainly, uh, that is a little bit encouraging, and we'll see what as soon as possible actually leads to. And, uh, I guess, uh, just make two more points with respect to, uh, tabling this is, we need to show some leadership here, and that's what we're asking, is leadership to be shown here, so we can ensure that there is transparency and accountability for the taxpayer dollars. And Mayor, I'll point out, yes, you have a fiduciary duty to, uh, the, uh, Metro Vancouver, but you also have a fiduciary duty to the taxpayers of Richmond. And I, I, I think we cannot lose, none of us at this table can lose that point of who we have a fiduciary duty to. So, um, hopefully the B.C. government, uh, gets involved in this, because as you know, Mayor, uh, whether it's Metro Vancouver, whether it's the TransLink Board, the Mayor's Council, Municipal Financial Authority-
ECOM.
ECOM, it goes on and on, hopefully not too much more, but the provincial government needs to act on this.
Um, I, I just, there's so many answers to what you just said. Um, I just do wanna comment that, that there was one of the councillors who was commenting on this motion that we eventually received on the media without us having the motion. So, uh, I, I think there, if there's timing issues, there's a number of timing issues. Councillor Day.
Well, hang on, let me, let me just clarify that idea.
If, uh, finger's being pointed at me. This motion was provided to everyone at this table on July third.
Yes.
Everyone, I'm, I'm-
But the point is, when did you speak to the media about it? That was before you provided it to others.
No. No. Incorrect, Mayor. And I really challenge you on making that allegation towards me.
I see.
You understand that?
I don't see why we have to table this. I mean, point number one is that directors be flexible and voluntary refuse compensation. I mean, you know, I don't wanna get paid $500 to drive to, drive to New Westminster to, to go to a council of councils meeting, but I don't have any way to say no. And that's not right. I mean, it's ridiculous, $500 for a four-hour meeting. I could see if it was in Hope, but, I mean, it's just in New Westminster. So I, I think that needs to go through as soon as possible, because there will no doubt be a council of councils meeting coming up. So, um, I, let's just, let's just do what we can do as a city. And I, and I noticed that, you know, Mr. Uh, Mayor Brad West did a long, intensive interview, and this is dated way back in, um, July twenty-first, I think. So, um, no, it's not. It's, I, I printed it today. Never, yeah, I'm sorry. But when I look at Mr. Hurley's letter, and you provided this to us, Mayor Brody, as was mentioned today, would have been nice to have had it last week, and it's, Chair Hurley states that, um, "These are not recommendations for Metro Vancouver, and it's not the jurisdiction of Metro Vancouver to take this action." But that's not what the report said. It specifically said that "Consider introducing a cap or maximum remuneration threshold for the total income from all local government-related appointments such as Metro Vancouver," and dot, dot, dot. Then it goes to, "This might not exceed the, the, uh, basically the, uh, remuneration of a B.C. council cabinet minister at $183,000." That the report is very straightforward that is being referred to in the motion, and this is con- conflicting with that. And I, when I read the, um, direction that Mayor West had when he made his motion way back, and I think it was February, um, this, this is taking far, far, far too long. And people have had it. Taxpayers are, are stretched to the max, and I don't think we should table this. I think we should send this, this motion to, um, um, Metro Vancouver and get the ball rolling. And maybe this letter will help motivate them to get serious and get going on this. So I don't think we should table it. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hobbs.
Thanks, and through the chair. Um, hmm. Couple things. Uh, well, the first question of, related to the tabling is, um, and it might have been asked, but is there a date when the review's going to be done roughly? Um, do we know?
Well, it's underway.
Okay. And is it, but was there a date given, like, three months, four months?
No.
Okay.
Something like that. You can't give a date.
Okay. Um, so I would like to see the review before we deal with an issue like this, because the review is going to touch on probably a lot of different issues related to Metro, and I do believe that Metro Vancouver, uh, requires a lot of revision, both in terms of governance and how they conduct their business, including fees and everything that we go to. In terms of, um, uh, going to meetings and things like that, uh, yeah, some of the fees are, I, in my opinion, exorbitant, and that's why I don't go to council of council anymore, because I don't wanna take $500 for a meeting. I can read it online, or read, uh, a number of different reports to get that information. But that's a personal decision, uh, for me. I don't begrudge other people going, because there's lots of good reasons to go to those meetings. Um, I will, uh, support, uh, the tabling of it, because I think the review issue is much bigger than this. And I think when it comes to remuneration, that asking somebody to voluntarily, uh, change something on a one-off basis, and there is more than one person going to Metro Vancouver, sitting on the table here, I think it requires a much more systemic review. And so I'm hoping that that's what we get from Metro Vancouver, uh, and that the, uh, fee schedule for meetings and everything will be one part of it, because I, I do believe that, uh, the public has a real strong interest in this issue. And I'm hoping that Metro Vancouver comes out with a meaningful review, uh, with a lot of changes that, uh, will improve its overall performance, including its governance. Thanks.
All right. The motion to table is on the floor. We'll call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? It's carried with councillors Day, Heath, and Wolf opposed. They have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All right. We are now adjourned, and, uh, we'll, we'll take five minutes to stretch. There is food back there, but we will start the public hearing in five minutes for anybody who's here.
Quarter two?
Yes. We'll start at quarter two. Okay. Good, uh, good afternoon, folks. Um, I do apologize for the time that we are starting at about twelve minutes to six. Um, unfortunately, we've had a very long agenda for the open general purposes committee meeting this afternoon, and it just, uh, it just ran a little overtime. So I do have a statement to read. Uh, this is a, a public hearing, and the council meeting is being convened in order to hold public hearings on misuse matters. The public and anyone who believes their interest in property is affected by the agenda items may speak or present written submissions to council. Everyone's to be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard, and no one should be, be, feel discouraged from making their views known. So if you wish to speak, or you're registered with a city clerk, and I don't think anyone's done that, you should, after being recognized by the chair, begin by clearly stating your name and your address. If you have provided a written submission, please make this known at the beginning. All written submissions will be retained by the city clerk and will form part of the record of the hearing. Each speaker may address the hearing a maximum of twice. The length of your first presentation will be limited to a maximum of ten minutes. Your comments must be relevant and not obstruct the hearing. Any additional presentation which must be on new information will be limited to three minutes. Members of council may ask questions at you following your presentation, yet the- yet the function of council members during a public hearing is to listen to the views of the public, not to debate the merits of matters with citizens. Any debate by members of council will occur at the subsequent vote. The order of proceedings for each item will normally be as follows. Firstly, the city clerk will briefly describe the matter under consideration. Then the applicant or their agent will be invited to make a brief presentation. The city clerk will then identify any written submissions received, followed by oral submissions from the public, and any further written submissions. And then finally, the hearing will be closed and matters may be considered. Please note that delegations must present in a respectful manner without interference or comment from the audience. The city council is committed to ensuring a safe and respectful environment and supports the right of the community to bring comments forward. Please observe these rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the chair. So, who is it? Madam Clerk, the first item?
Thank you, your worship. The first item is Richmond Official Community Plan Amendment Biwa 10649 and Richmond Zoning Amendment Biwa 10650. The location is for 9040 Francis Road. The applicant is Foger Architecture Incorporated. And the purpose of the OCP designation amendment is to change the land use designation of the subject site from commercial to limited mixed use in Attachment 1 to Schedule 1 of the Richmond Official Community Plan Biwa 9000. And then the purpose of the zoning amendment is to rezone the subject site from neighborhood commercial zone to a new site-specific residential limited commercial Francis Road Broadmoor Zone to permit the development of a five-story mixed-use building containing commercial, service and parking uses on the ground floor level, indoor and outdoor remedy space at the rooftop level, and 60 rental housing units on the upper floors. First reading was on June 9, 2025.
All right. Is the applicant here on this matter?
We are.
I heard a voice. Did you want to make a presentation or just await questions?
I prefer to wait for questions.
All right. Any written submissions?
Yes, thank you, your worship. There are three on-table pieces of correspondence, all expressing opposition from Richard Lee, Leylin, and Jason and Barb Davidson.
All right. Does anybody wish to speak to us on this item on the agenda? Anyone? Okay, come forward. Please, no. Come, have a seat, and introduce yourself, and you've got 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jason Davidson. I've been a Richmond resident for 52 years, coming on 53 pretty soon. I live at 9071 Glen Allen Drive, which is directly behind the property in question. Literally, my backyard is a path away from the property. I understand this meeting is in the rezoning of that property to allow for a development, but the two are somewhat intertwined in that the application was put forward so the applicant could build a five-story mixed-use building. My wife and I have submitted a written proposal. I'm not going to really go into detail with all of that because it's already before you all. But I just wanted to talk about some of the key reasons why we are initially opposed to the rezoning of this property. We do not have an issue. In actual fact, we are supportive of housing. We have two children, a 24-year-old and 21-year-old, who still live at home. And we are well aware of the need of rental housing or just housing in general. We support the type of structure that is, in the general sense, a commercial plus residential. Our initial position of this development as it is being presented is the size and scope of it. We've lived in this neighborhood for a long time. You drive down Garden City, you drive down Francis. All you see is two-level units, north, south, east, west, as far as you're I can see. I'm sitting in my backyard. I look up. I can see over my trees, and I can see the sky. This development will drastically change my view. I will sit in my backyard, and I will look up, and I will see five stories of apartment building windows looking down on me. I will be driving to and from my house every day to work, and I will see two-level houses, and then I will see this one big five-story structure. I'm also concerned about the impact that this structure will have on the structural integrity of my house. My house was built in 1973. As you're all aware, the soil enrichment is somewhat liquefied, and there will have to be a lot of compacting of that space in order to allow for that structure to be built. I am very concerned about my foundation, my walls, the cracks, and what recourse I have. I'm also concerned about some of the aspects of this development in that the number of parking spaces that have been allowed for based on transit passes and accommodations, commercial space that's on the bottom, and parking availability for those people. I'm also concerned about some removal of trees that are happening that have been approved for this development. This will also impact my view into this property. There will be no more privacy. Those trees will be gone now. And so I really, you know, all we have is a six-foot chain-link fence right now that is between the path that is on our property and the current RAPS facility. Trees are being removed from our neighboring property that serves as a buffer as well. And so I don't see any, I do see that there will be some replacement of trees put into there, but that's going to take a long time to grow to the size of the current trees. And first, and finally, it's just, I understand the city is going through its official community plan, and these properties on corners of these streets are targeted by other levels of government, not just the city, for redevelopment and rezoning to allow for these kind of properties. So I do understand that ultimately, you know, what's being discussed here is almost really just a formality in the end. But the purpose of this hearing is, in particular, because of this development. And the reason we're here is because the applicant is asking for that rezoning before all of the official community plan is being developed to allow for this specific development. So I really don't have much more to say other than we do support, we aren't NIMBYs. We do support this structure in principle. We just find that the size of the structure is maybe just a little bit too large for the neighborhood. And if there was maybe an opportunity to reduce the size or scope of this facility, we would be a little bit more inclined to maybe speak on behalf of it. But at this point, nobody from the development has even knocked on our door to talk to us about it or anything. So we just have to go by what we read in the papers and the proposals, so.
Just point out which house is yours?
This one right here.
It's this one?
Yeah, so I have like a rectangular lot, a pie-shaped lot. And so there's my backyard, and there's the...
Okay, so it's just the back corner?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, my backyard, if I want to look up, currently, I don't even see the building. But now I will.
So just one other question. If the building, like right now, the existing building is orientated right at the back fence, like on the south side of the lot. The new building is going to be orientated closer to Francis. So if it was orientated a little bit more toward Francis, would you be supportive of that?
I don't think it's necessarily the front or back. I think it's just the height. You know, I'm not an engineer. I don't know angles and all that stuff. It's more of just the height. And, you know, even, I look at the building at Three and Williams. You know, it's one story less. That even seems reasonable. It's literally one story, for my wife and I, just, you know, one story too tall.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Wolf, do you have a question?
Yes, the question, the first question is in regards to, you said you weren't involved. You haven't communicated with the developer at all. Have you been aware of the signs that have been put up on the property?
Yeah, we've been watching the signs, and that's where we're here. We've been watching the signs all along. We've been waiting for those dates to come up. We have communicated. We've called with city staff to ensure that we are part of the process. We've emailed. We've received the full package. We submitted our email outlining our points. And so we have been in communication, and this is, what we've been told is our first and only opportunity to speak on this.
Okay, thanks. Any other question I have, or two more for you? One is, the developer hasn't come up to the table to speak yet, but maybe I'll ask you. There's a for-sale sign on the property. Do you know how long that's been there?
I would say six months.
Okay. And then my, I think, last question is, you had a question here about, you wondered if each new tenant, would they also get those two-zone monthly bus passes as the first tenants will get? Is that something you would hope you'd encourage?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, like I don't want this to be first in, gets the prize, and then it's over, right? We want to encourage transit use. This proposal, for however it got to this point, has allowed for a reduced number of parking. And transit is being encouraged because this is a transit route. I would hope that this, I guess, benefit to the renters would be extended. But I'm not sure what the rules are on that.
Counselor Rick Nelson, do you have a question?
Yeah, just very quickly. I'm not going to get into mechanics in detail. Thank you, Mr. Davidson, for coming forward. You listed a half a dozen or a dozen concerns, et cetera, including size. Almost all of them can be dealt with with a discussion with a developer.
Of course.
And the developer is here, so obviously, contact tonight before you go. And I think it is good development, to be quite frank with you, except the size. And of course, not everything is going to be 100%, however, but three-quarters of the thing, and in particular protecting your own home and pictures, et cetera. But also, I think we have a good developer on this one who is very caring about the community and dealing with it. And I would definitely, if it goes through in this committee tonight, to, you make sure you have contact and phone numbers and also full discussion on it. Because I think through us, your worship, the staff, everything can be solved, not solved, but taken care of and addressed.
All right, Counselor He.
Yes, quickly, clarification regarding this for-sale sign. There is no for-sale sign on the premise. It was a marketing sign by the realtor for this. So I just wanted to clarify that.
It says for sale.
What? It's not for sale. And I think there's affidavits that the owner has with respect to that indicating it's not for sale. And the reason I bring this up, Mayor, is the fact that we've received correspondence with regard to it, in regard to that. So, Mr. Foger, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I know it is not for sale.
No, I was asked the question, and I answered it based on what I've seen for the last six months, which is a for-sale sign in front of the actual development sign.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to us on this item on the agenda? Yes, sir. So have a seat. Your name, identify yourself and tell us about it.
So my name is Richard Lee. I live in 9080 Garden City Road, which is just one building away from the 9040 Francis Road. I'm here today to speak for my neighbor. I support the development of new buildings. However, we are against this amount of 16 units in total. I read the city of the development plan regarding to the transportation planning. So it says they will have 35 parking lots in total. However, they have 60 units. And based on, there are two bedrooms and also one bedroom, and still, I think, at this, they will have much more vehicle than the parking lot stalls in total. And this will lead to whether the owner or the renter will have no vehicle or they will have a parked vehicle on the straight side. I think this will be causing the street parking pressure and the spill-over effect. And when you look at Francis Road, they will only have one side to park the vehicle right now. Most of them are occupied during the daytime, also the nighttime. And on Garden City Road, they only have three lanes, which is only one side can be parked for the vehicles. And if you're going to Garden City Road right now, you will see most parking lot are occupied. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. We'll excuse you now. Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak to us on this item? Yes, sir. Have a seat and identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Ling Chow, and I live at 840 Dorfing Court. So I'm here to speak for myself and my neighbors around. So for myself and all the neighbors I talk to, I think we support all the rental units and for housing, for this new building. Our concern is the size of this building. And because we live here for a while, so we know that it's not a very walkable place. The closest grocery is like at Brundell Close Garden City. That's like a single one kilometer away. And there's nothing wrong, no pharmacy, nothing wrong. And we kind of have concern with this new development, with very, as other people talk about, that very nice, very nice parking space. So there are only 29 parking space for the residents and six for the commercial and for the visitors. So it said that for every unit, there are only 0.48 parking. And I cannot doubt how they can get around, especially during the winter and rain seasons. If they have to get a car, where should we park the car? Where the parking will overflow to our community, to my driveway? That is a concern for us. And we also have concern, like, we know that for this development, it removed like 24 sports daycare. Actually, my daughter is there. So what's the replacement? Because we know that all the daycare facility in this place is kind of limited. We have to wait for a very long, like several months to get a sport in daycare. So now this 24 sport is gone, and we have no idea if there is any new coming or replacement. And we have, like, in this new development, there are six units, and I think it's 24, two bedroom. Then I assume will be 24 families here. And then for those, we have less spots and more family here. Even for those, I think, even for those, like, there's no pharmacy. There's nothing wrong here. If you got emergency, you have to go somewhere, and you don't have a car, you have to wait for the transit. I used to work in downtown, and for the transit, the only law is 48. It's very, very crowded during the big time. And it's like, for the most time, I could not even get a seat on the 48. Now, from the development plan, I can see that, okay, everyone, all the developers, like, we are encouraging people to use the transit. I think it's good. But do we have enough seats or space, even standing space, for the people going to live there? And even for existing, so we already live there, it's very crowded. And then there are more families coming and more people living here and going to use the transit. Do we have enough? I think all those mean that the size is huge for this place. And I also looked around that we have another building approved, I think, in 2020, at Number 3 Road and William. So that one, I think, is very close, is to the fresh code. Everything is close. And I think the city also approved one in Number 3 Road and Francis. I can't remember the exact one, but there is another one nearby. I think they also have a lot more parking space around. And, but this place is, okay, we got is the highest density and the fewest grocery or anything commercial around. And unless, like, when people need to access those promises, don't have anything, then I have, yeah, I would see that we need to consider all those people, especially, like, people going to live there in the future. Because we are already the residents here, so I can't think, okay, our life going to be impacted. But for the people going to move there, I hope that we can build something that they can support. They live a better place, right? Because everyone deserves to live in a good place here in Richmond. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wanting to speak to us on this item on the agenda? Anyone else? I've got a couple of questions for staff. Mr. Craig, if we could speak to you about this, or Mr. Reese, et cetera. A couple of the points that were raised, parking came up time and time again. So what are the requirements, and what is provided for?
Through your worship, the proposal includes 29 parking stalls for residents. There are six commercial spaces that are being provided. These are shared visitor spaces as well, so when they are not being used for commercial use, visitors would have access to those stalls. The applicant has submitted a traffic impact study to the city that has been reviewed and agreed to by the agreed to by the city's transportation department. We are satisfied based on the recommendations of their transportation consultant that there is sufficient parking on site for the proposed use.
You also talked about the soft soil conditions. Can you comment on that? Is this going to be preloaded or piles or what's it going to be?
Through your worship, the intention, I would imagine, in this instance would be for preloading of the site. The, that will all be ultimately determined through a building permit application and subsequent geotechnical investigation to identify the most appropriate form of soil compaction. What I would suggest is that the developer is here today and they have shown a willingness to continue to work with city staff and that we will ask that they communicate as such with their neighbors during the construction process.
All right. We've got a couple of questions. Counselor Wolf.
Thanks. I'm not sure if staff are able to answer this, but I haven't had a chance to talk to my colleague beside me because we're in the middle of a meeting and we're directing questions this way. And that, is the property for sale or what's for sale here?
Through your worship to Counselor Wolf, it's our understanding the property is not currently for sale, that the sign had been posted on the property as a form of marketing of the previous agent who was actually responsible for selling the property to the current property owner. If there are further questions along this line, I would suggest that the applicant is present, maybe best to answer that, respond to that.
It's just interesting why it wouldn't be taken down if it's not being sold anymore by that owner. Other question I have is, do you know of other agreements when it comes to the two zone bus passes? Does it only go typically to the first tenants or is that something that's honored to subsequent?
Through your worship to Counselor Wolf, as part of the transportation demand management measure in this case around transit passes that are being provided, so it is a two zone transit pass for a period of two years, it is on a monthly basis. As part of the legal agreement that they'll be required to enter into, operational details such as how residents will be provided with access to those passes will be ironed out through that review process. It is my understanding, however, that typically in these instances, as they are monthly passes, that they are given out to existing residents who reside at the property on a monthly basis.
Okay. My last question then, through your worship, is in regards to trees. So there's no trees on site, yet they're going to plant 19 trees on site. There's 23 tall, mature Douglas fir trees that was alluded to in the delegation earlier. And those trees don't have to be replanted in the two to one ratio. They're being negotiated with the property owner, the neighbor and the developer. Do we know if there's, if there's been an agreement and if there will be trees planted or is this just a cash and lieu transaction?
Through your worship to Counselor Wolf, with respect to the tree replacement, the site is securing 19 new trees to be planted on site. We'll further review that through the development permit process. Certainly, as this project progresses to the development permit process, we'll be able to get a better update in terms of the discussions that have taken place between the applicant and the property owner around an arrangement for replacing those trees ideally on the two, between the two properties.
Thank you. Counselor Day.
So parking seems to be a big issue. If there is overflow, where do you anticipate they would park?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, as indicated, the traffic impact or analysis that was completed by the applicant indicates that the proposed parking rate on site is sufficient in order to meet the demand of the site.
What's plan B? I mean, you know, you never know. Someone could show up with two or three cars and so just like, I've driven down there. There's, right now, there's parking in front of the subject property, but I don't think that's going to stay, is it?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, the parking stalls are slightly east of the subject property. The proposed road improvements are not, not expected to impact the existing on-street parking alone. Francis?
In front of the building? Okay, because I've parked there many times and I've gone to the store. So I'm looking at the very, very fine print and it appears as though that this building is about 33 feet, like I think it's 10, 11 meters from the south end to the beginning of the next house. Is that what you've got? It's really, really tiny printing, so it's kind of hard to read. Which page was that, Laura?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, the building is setback from the property line. I'll just have to give a little bit more detail to find out exactly how far it is separated from the property to the south. What I would say is in addition to the setbacks being provided between this building and the property line, there is also a walkway and then the adjacent property would be setback from that as well.
It's almost like a breezeway that is provided on the Garden City side, right?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, the public walkway on the south side of the building, it is a public walkway. As part of this application, they are widening that walkway by half a meter.
Okay. And so because the building is on this corner, there won't be any shadowing because the shadowing would apply to the north side of the building, right? Given that the sun is on the south.
Through your worship to Counselor Day, that's correct.
Okay, so it's quite a difference. And then one of the letters said that the school would be stretched to the limit. Can you comment on the schools in the area?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, so the application, typical, typically a proposal of this scale does not require referral to the school board. We do, as a city, provide regular updates to the school board about active applications. To date, we are not aware of any challenges that the school board would have in terms of accommodating any new children.
Okay. And then the other complaint was the height. So this one is going to be five stories and I believe the one at Williams and number three road is four stories. The one that's going to be built at the corner of Francis and three road, how many stories is that one?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, that proposal is five stories in height.
So same thing. Okay. So we are just getting a little bigger because of the density that we're requiring in order to provide the housing.
Through your worship to Counselor Day, in part, yes, and the other part is that the parking on the, in the proposal is provided, covered and within the proposed building.
Okay, so then that allows for more. Okay. And, sorry, I'm losing my voice here. And then on the east side, I understand that's going to be right in, right out for cars, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so what's the setback from that house to the beginning of the building?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, I believe it's 7.35 meters, at least from the property line. And typical building setbacks for a single-family home in the area is an additional 1.2 meters.
Okay. And the green space will actually be on the roof. Is that right?
Through your worship to Counselor Day, the proposed amenity space is located on the roof.
All right, okay.
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Hobs.
Thanks. Through the chair. You know, I think we're going to be seeing these kind of issues with a number of developments that come forward in the future. So the kind of concerns that have been expressed aren't new. And one of the ones that I think, and I want you to confirm that we can look at this and deal with it as best we can, if this one moves ahead, through the development process, is the privacy issue. I mean, we're putting a four or in this case, five-story building possibly if it goes ahead right beside a neighborhood. And so Counselor Wolf brought it up a little bit too, and that's the tree issue. And so I think it's really important to retain what we can, but also in terms of what kind of trees go in, there can be big differences, both in terms of size, and it's all a matter of money and what can be put in, and then coniferous and deciduous, you know, that makes a difference in terms of that as well. So the question is, can you give some assurance that those issues can be addressed as best as possible through the development permit application if this was to go ahead?
Through your worship to Counselor Hobs, yes. Through the development permit process, we will look at, continue to look at any adjacency issues and they will be required to provide us with a full landscaping plan and details that we will certainly look at in terms of how they propose to best address any adjacency and overlooked concerns.
Yeah, I guess in terms of trees and cases like this, size does matter. So I mean, the little tiny tree that takes 30 years to grow into something substantial, you know, maybe there's a compromise or a better solution than, you know, the sapling. Thank you.
Counselor Galanders.
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of questions. So this is at Francis and Garden City. So there's the large mall at Blundell and Garden City with amenities, the pharmacies, doctors' offices, and all those things. Is that considered, I know for me, I would, I do walk that distance to my local community hub. Is it considered a very walkable distance to those amenities?
Through your worship to Counselor Galanders, yes. The subject property is within about 800 meters of that, which is about a 10-minute walking distance.
Great. And if, can you refresh my memory, do we have a bidirectional bike lane on Garden City in that section? Or do peoples have to cycle on the road? I can't remember.
Through your worship, I can't recall off the top of my head whether there is bidirectional at this point. I'm not sure if our director of transportation happens to...
Yeah. Through your worship to the counselor, I'm not certain at this point, I don't believe there is though at that location.
But the sidewalk is wide and in good shape. There's not any like small, narrow.
No.
Yeah, road's wide, right? So it's, yeah, so it's good for multi types of strollering, trailing your bike and this and that to the mall.
Through your worship to Counselor Galanders, as part of this application too, there is an extensive servicing agreement that does include frontage improvements, including a widening of the existing sidewalk.
Oh, great. And then there was something, one of the delegations brought up childcare space. So how does the increasing families fit into our childcare strategy in that region?
Through your worship to Counselor Galanders, in terms of the childcare spaces in the community, it's difficult for me to understand exactly where these children might go to daycare. What I will say is that the applicant has indicated that they are working with the existing tenant and that they are providing relocation assistance in the form of leasing and construction and moving services.
Okay, just one more thing. The thing I like about this, well, if you look at Williams and three road, it's on the south side, so it being four stories, it doesn't affect people's south exposure of sunlight as much because it's not as high. Whereas this development being on the northwest corner, it doesn't affect the neighbors to the south, it doesn't affect their southern or western exposure, which is, which is nice. It's just seeing the building and looking north. And it's understandable that, you know, people don't want to see a big building, but I have the same issue with the mansions that are right in the backyard of my house and they're right up against the hedge and they're looking right into my backyard and I have no control over that. It's just, it's the way it is. So my question is, is the orientation of whether it's on the southwest or if it's on the northeast corners, sorry, northwest or southeast corners, is that a determining factor in how we choose the height, like foreshadowing and whatnot?
Through your worship to Counselor Galanders, what I would say is that with this proposal in particular, certainly as we look to what any adjacencies and impacts to the property are, we do look for opportunities in terms of where we can push the massing. In this instance, much of the building is focused on the Francis Road frontage, pushing it away as much as we can from the internal neighborhood.
Yeah, that's what I noticed from the drawing, so that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. May have a motion on second and third.
7:31 on 649.
Move, okay, on the OCP. Further comments? Counselor Day.
I just wanted to ask the applicant about relocation of the childcare. Relocation of the childcare that's existing in the property right now. Just wanted to ask the applicant.
Okay, introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Mayor and Council. My name is Orion Kocher. I'm the managing partner of Parker Development Group. Thank you for having me today. So through Chair and Counselor Day, we have spoken to the owner of that daycare facility and through staff's recommendation and through what we see fit, we've offered partial space of the commercial area in order to service the childcare need.
Okay.
We have...
Yeah.
And?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Why, do you have another question? This is the third time you've heard this.
Wow, we don't want to waste time, do we?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll call the question on the OCP. All those in favor? Those opposed? That's carried. And second and third reading of the zoning bylaw.
Move.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Oh, it's carried with Counselor Wolf opposed.
Another direction.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to move that the contractor provide appropriate information to continue to deal with the neighbors, Mr. Davidson, Lee and Chow, as the construction continues and as the developer moves along.
I think what we can do is give that direction to staff.
All right, through staff, but to make sure it's done and they have the contact when they leave tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Both, Counselor Wolf is opposed. Okay, next item, Madam Clark.
Thank your worship. The next item is item two, Richmond Zoning Amendment Bylaw 10662. The location is for 8160 number five road. The applicant is Matthew Cheng Architects Incorporated. And the purpose is to rezone the subject property from Agriculture AG1 to Assembly AST to facilitate the proposed assembly use, religious statues, associated parking, existing barn and proposed roadside stand. First reading was on June 9th.
All right. Is the applicant here? Did you wish to make a presentation or just await questions?
We'll wait for questions.
Thank you. Any written submissions?
None, your worship.
Anybody want to speak to this item on the agenda? Anyone?
Move second and third.
So it's moved and seconded, discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? It's carried. So that's your item. Zoning Bylaw 8500. Madam Clark.
Thank your worship. The next is item three, Richmond Zoning Amendment Bylaw 10676. The location is for 8800 Oddlin Crescent and 871 Oddlin Road. The applicant is Orion Construction. And the purpose is to rezone the subject property from single detached RS1E to industrial retail IR2 to permit development of two two-story multi-tenant buildings with light industrial and limited retail uses. First reading was on June 23rd.
All right, is the applicant here?
We are.
Did you wish to make a presentation or just await questions? Okay, any written submissions?
None, your worship.
Anybody want to speak to us on this item? Anyone here? Okay.
Second and third.
Seconded, discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried with Counselors Galanders Day and Wolf opposed. And the final item, Madam Clark.
Thank you. Item four, Richmond Zoning Amendment Bylaw 10680. The location is 9100 and 9120 Bridgeport Road. The applicant is Carrie Si. And the purpose is to amend the existing auto-oriented commercial CA zone and to rezone the subject property from the school and institutional use SI zone to the auto-oriented commercial CA zone in order to allow a vehicle sales rental office and accessory parking. First reading was on June 23rd.
All right, is the applicant here? Did you wish to make a presentation or just await questions?
Uh, we'll wait.
Okay. Any written submissions?
None, your worship.
Anybody wanting to speak to us on this item on the agenda? All right?
Second and third.